Two minutes until we air. One minute until livestream. One minute until we air. We are now streaming.
Good evening, good evening. Happy Monday, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving week. We would like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order for this, the 20th day of November 2023 here at 7:00 PM in City Hall. We want to welcome all of you who have joined us tonight in person, as well as those who are joining us remotely as well. Please join me in a moment of silent meditation before we begin the people's business. Thank you, everyone. We'll now recognize Councilwoman Freeman, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand and salute the flag as we say the pledge.
Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor O'Neill?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton noted he will be arriving by 7:45. Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
Councilmember Jose Hyman?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
And Councilmember Williams?
I'm present.
Thank you. I also like to acknowledge standing in tonight. We have Attorney Donald Tool, who will be standing in for our city attorney. He has been a longtime member of the city attorney's office here in Durham, so I know you recognize him. He will be leaving us for retirement in January, so I'd just like for us to take a moment to appreciate him. I know we have further remarks, but I did want to acknowledge that he is here with us tonight, and we thank you for your service to Durham. He has a beautiful grandbaby that I saw pictures of earlier tonight, so I know he's going to enjoy that space. We also have Deputy City Manager with us tonight, Bo Ferguson. I know you all know him well. He's been with us for a long time. He's standing in tonight for City Manager Paige. We are in his able hands tonight. And thank you, Deputy City Manager Bo Ferguson, for being with us tonight.
Deputy manager, thank you.
And also in our clerks department, our clerk is out today, and we have two assistant clerks who are sitting here tonight with us. So I'm going to give them an opportunity to introduce themselves, because you probably don't see them a lot. But they are here, and they are normally, one of the two of them are normally co-chairing or sitting beside our clerk Diana Schreiber. But tonight, she is also away. Our three direct reports are away tonight. City Manager Paige will be back tomorrow, but some of us are taking vacation and have other things going on. So these two capable ladies are standing in tonight for our city clerk Diana Schreiber. And I know I'm catching you off guard, but I do think it's important that people know that there's a team behind making sure all of this works.
Good evening, everyone. I am Deputy City Clerk Lola Roland.
And I'm Assistant City Clerk Ashley Adams.
Thank you all for being here tonight with us. And we are now turning to our ceremonial items. The first one will be a recognition of a longtime Durham legend, in my opinion, Mr. Arnold Dennis. And the second will be a Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims proclamation by Councilwoman Caballero. And I will be doing the salute to Arnold. Mr. Arnold Dennis, like I indicated, is a, I still say is, because I still think that he is doing what he does best, and that is helping the community as he has transitioned. I would like to recognize his wife, who I asked to join me this evening. And we have several people who have worked with him with the Rights of Passage organizations. So if you all would just stand and be recognized for a second as she comes, so that all those who know Arnold Dennis are here on his behalf as we take time to remember him. Thank you all for being here tonight. You may be seated. I met Arnold Dennis when he was Chair, come on up, Ms. Betty, when he was Director of the Durham County Detention Center. And he had been there a number of years. And I'm still finding out, even after he has left us from this earthly realm to transition to another realm, all of the things that he has done in Durham. I was telling, talking to Tika Dimson, who I see sitting in the audience tonight, as she reminded me of how Arnold had been one of the first social workers to actually walk the streets of Durham, particularly having an impact over in Few Gardens. And so many other things. We all probably best know him for Rights of Passage. It was a mentoring organization that is still in existence, and he has touched so many young African-American males over this community now at least two or three generations deep. So it is an honor that I take time to recognize all of the contributions that he has done over this city and in this county and in this state and in this world. He lived for a period of time in Africa, where he started his family with his wife before coming to Durham. And so he has had a great partnership in marriage, and not everybody can say that. They were married for over 50 years. And they have two daughters. And so, you know, they exemplify so much of the good of life and how you can have a partner who really partners with you not only in your personal space, but in your professional space, and then to carry on that tradition. So we are honored that you are here tonight with us, Ms. Betty, and we're honored to see all of these people who stand and know what Arnold has done. And so with this, I will read this letter, and then you will also have a copy of it. And we'll give you a few opportunities to say a few remarks. To the family of Mr. Arnold Dennis. As Mayor of the City of Durham and Durham City Council, I would like to extend our deepest consolences for the loss of Arnold Dennis. Arnold Dennis was a New York native. He was an influential public figure, accomplished community leader, scholar, former North Carolina Central faculty member, and juvenile justice activist. He was a Congress of Racial Equality member and a key stakeholder in the Durham business and professional change. His extensive social work knowledge and experience have solidified him as a visionary public servant and leader who early identified the school-to-prison pipeline and made it his life's work to identify those most affected and create programs and a support system to combat this problem. He was a visionary who understood the importance of increasing the knowledge of the Black diaspora and community involvement of multiple generations with the Pan-African Skills Organization. Arnold Dennis, my friend, my big brother, was a guide for and confident for the Rights of Passage program, whose work has positively served over 400 young Black men through support and mentorship. His commitment and dedication to education and community involvement would serve as a legacy and a roadmap for me and for others. The Durham community feels the loss of my friend Arnold Dennis, and we are honored to acknowledge his positive impact on many people's lives. Please stay strong, stay encouraged, and ask for help when needed. Know that you have a city that is standing with you. Elaine O'Neill.
Thank you so much, Elaine. I appreciate that. Thank you. I certainly appreciate this, and I know that wherever Arnold is, he's smiling. I want to help you know him just a little bit better, because I'm going to tell you how we met. We met in New York, and I was a member of COR, the Congress of Racial Equality. I don't know if you remember that organization, but those of you who are as old as I am, maybe you do. And we were having an event, and Arnold came to the event, and he expressed an interest in seeing me again. And I said, "If you want to see me, come to the Congress of Racial Equality meeting, and I will see you there." And he did. And it went from there to marriage, and 52 years we were together.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be reading the proclamation for Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims. And I think, I know John Tomidge is in the crowd, and I'm not sure who else is with him. If you all want to join me up here, thank you. Whereas all Durham residents deserve to travel safely, regardless of whether walking, biking, rolling, using transit, or driving or riding in a car. And whereas from January 2023 through October 2023, 25 individuals lost their lives in motor vehicle crashes in Durham, including eight people walking and five people riding a bike or motorcycle. And whereas we remember all people killed and seriously injured on Durham streets and roads, and acknowledge the crucial work of the emergency services. And whereas the city council successfully funded a Visions Year Coordinator position in 2023, affirming the city's commitment to eliminating all traffic deaths and serious injuries. And whereas the city of Durham continues to invest in traffic safety measures and work with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for safer street and road design. And whereas we call upon all Durham drivers to do your part by committing to safe driving practices, including not driving while distracted nor while intoxicated. And whereas the World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims, adopted by the United Nations General Assembly as the appropriate acknowledgement for victims of road traffic crashes and their families, is commemorated on the third Sunday of November each year. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Monday, November 20, 2023, as Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to take note of this observance. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 20th day, November 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. This is in honor of my nephew Sean McDaniel, who was killed in May on the corner of Cornwallis and Fayetteville Street. The thing that I hope that you all take away from this is when you're out driving, please always be aware of the people who are walking and riding bikes and motorcycles, because they're just as important as you are in your car. Thank you.
Thank you all. We will now turn to announcements by council, and I'll turn to my left first. See if we have any announcements on this end. All right. Thank you so much. I'll look to my right. Any announcements? Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I did just want to share that I just came back from the National League of Cities City Summit in Atlanta and did have a great opportunity to hear from partners all across the country on the work that they're doing around so many areas. And I'm looking forward to having more conversations with folks in the community about what we can do here to mimic some of that and then also just to bring it home. Other than that, I will say that I am struggling this Thanksgiving and just acknowledging that there are some folks in this world who are dealing with the loss of their family members and just not knowing where they are. And I just want to make sure I uplift that and make sure that we're being kind in offering our support to others. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you. Just want to also co-tell, Councilmember Freeman just stated, Wake County just lost two commissioners. So just also want to uplift our regional colleagues. One current commissioner, James West, who had been there for a long time, and also former county commissioner, Ms. Betty Lou. We don't do this work alone. We do it as a region as well, so just want to uplift that. The other thing is, also spent time last week in Atlanta with the National League of Cities, Councilmember Freeman and Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and just networking and gaining access to a lot of resources. We look forward to working together to bring those here. But really good news. We recently, with the support of our delegation in Raleigh, I was there to accept the award on behalf of Mayor O'Neill and the council for the city of Durham. Received $300,000, a $300,000 appropriation for the hair-on rookery. That was our largest allocation from the General Assembly in Durham for a natural heritage site in over 12 years, I believe. So that was a really good win for us, and I'm excited that we have it coming, and there is more to come. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all. I do also want to give a shout out for the Bull City Business Summit that was held on last Thursday and Friday at the library. We had a lot of good representation and presentations and learned a lot. So I do want to say a shout out to the Durham County Library, the Durham Tech Small Business Center, and all of our various partners, including Give It to the People and the city, Victoria Gonzalez, who was present as well. And we also want to say thank you to Tamar Braxton of Braxton Family Values, who talked to us for about 10 minutes via Zoom. So it was a very successful summit, in my opinion, and I hope that that will continue. Tonight is my last night presiding. And the next time that we get together on December 4, you will be getting ready to seat a new city council. We will have our last work session on tomorrow as well. So this will be the last two meetings of this particular council on December 4. You will see the new council. So please come back on December 4 and make sure that you see your outgoing representatives. Councilwoman Johnson will be leaving us. She has served ably since, I think, 2017. If I remember, 2015. And during that time, she was also Mayor Pro Tem. So it's not easy doing any of this. So we give shouts out to her for being a longstanding member. Councilwoman Jose Hyman and I will be departing as well, and we just thank you for the opportunity to serve. So with that being said, let us go through and recognize our deputy city manager to see if we have any priority items from the city manager's office.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The city manager's office has no priority items this evening.
Thank you. And to Attorney O'Toole, do we have any priority items from the city attorney's office?
Good evening, Mayor and council members and folks in the audience. Sitting in, Donald Tool's sitting in for Kim Rayburg this evening. And the city attorney's office has no priority items.
And we turn to our able clerks and see if you have any priority items this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The city clerk's office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you so much. We will now turn to our Second Order of Business, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. All items on the Consent Agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council. Items may be removed from the Consent Agenda by a council member or a member of the public, and those items will be considered separately at the end of the meeting tonight. At this point, I will read the entire agenda into the record, beginning with the Consent Agenda. Item number one is the Durham Workers' Rights Commission appointment. Number two, Amendment number one, contract agreement with the Museum of Durham History to provide technology upgrades and staff compensation. Item three, is the American Rescue Plan Act Opera Project an innovative model for examining the financial impact of COVID-19 on small businesses in Durham? Item four, is there inter-local agreement with Durham County for Joint Crisis Communications Plan Contract? Item five is the Cooperative Group Purchase Contract, One Bucket Chart. Item six is an agreement to fund the Durham Symphony 2024 season operated by Durham Symphony Incorporated using City of Durham funds. Item seven is an agreement to create public art at the former Wheel Skating Center. Item eight, contract with Century Link Communications LLC doing business as Lumen Technologies Group for City Hall Cloud Connectivity. Item nine is contract with Carter Communications Operating LLC for City Hall Cloud Connectivity. Did I read that again? Item 10, the First Amendment to Contract Securance LLC Virtual Chief Information Security Officer, VCO, Managed Services. Item 11 is the Grant Project Ordinance for Unified Planning Work Program, FY24. Item 12 is a supplemental agreement, number two, with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for Austin Avenue Sidewalks, TIP, number C-5183B. Item 13 is a supplemental agreement, number two, with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for Marine Road Bike Lanes and Sidewalks, TIP, number C-4928. 14, supplemental agreement, number three, to Master Agreement, number 18908, with Kemley Horn and Associates, Inc. for Traffic Calming Design Services in Identified Equity Neighborhoods. Item 15, Amendment number four, with Turner and Townsend-Herrie LLC, Contract Number 13441 for Program Management of the Water Management Facility Expansion Project. Our General Business Agenda, Public Hearings. Item 16, Annexation, COVID Farms Track. Item 17 is a Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, Simplifying Codes for Affordable Development. I am now ready to entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by, what's that, Councilwoman Jose Hyman, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote, and please report out.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now turn to item 16, I believe. We're going to start our public hearings at this time. Item 16 is an annexation, Culver Farms Track.
All right, good evening.
And we will hear and receive the staff. Good evening. This is a zoning case.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill and honorable council members. I'm Alexander Cahill with the Planning Department. We are going to present today on the Culver Farms potential city-initiated annexation, provide some information to council and to community members as to what this is. So how did we get here? The North Carolina General Assembly passed legislation in its 2014 legislative session allowing the city of Durham to consider annexing Culver Farms. In order to annex Culver Farms pursuant to the session law, the city is required to hold a public hearing, and the council may annex the development or choose not to, based on the council's sole discretion. You may remember that 751 South came before you. I think it was in May. That was a state enacted or enabled annexation that was just north of the site. Culver Farms is just south of 751 South, as the name suggests, along Highway 751 and Culver Farms Way. So the context is probably really important in this case, especially because we've heard from the community over the past few weeks, and many were not aware, did not know, when they bought into the subdivision, some of the history. And so I think it's important to cover this evening. Back in 2013, the developer lobbied the legislature to annex 751 South into the city limits. In that request, the developer also asked to include Culver Farms as the automatic annexation. At the time, the, I guess you'd say compromise was made that the council would have discretion over choosing whether to annex Culver Farms. This session law was passed in June 2014 by the North Carolina General Assembly. And then tonight, the city council is able to consider via a public hearing whether they choose to annex Culver Farms or choose not to into the city limits. The next point that's really important this evening to understand is slightly different. What is the difference between annexation and infrastructure acceptance? So annexation is the process of bringing land into Durham's corporate limits. That is what this state legislation enabled or allowed or is allowing the council to consider. Acceptance is the formal process by which the city accepts infrastructure for maintenance, generally by the city. Generally, only infrastructure that is constructed in accordance with city standards is subject to acceptance. Please note that private stormwater infrastructure is never accepted by the city for maintenance. So what infrastructure would be accepted as a result of this annexation should you approve it this evening? No infrastructure is automatically accepted as part of this annexation. So I think that's an important clarity to make this evening. The following city services, however, would be provided upon annexation, which includes city fire services, city police services, city parks and recreation programming, curbside waste collection, and for those that are on city water, a reduction in the water rate by half. So what you'll be considering tonight is the annexation and direct translational zoning. The council will consider the annexation of Culver Farms in the city's corporate limits. If the council approves the annexation this evening, it will then vote on the direct translational zoning. If you choose not to approve the annexation, you will not vote on the zoning. In addition, the state authority to annex without a voluntary annexation petition will expire. If you do approve the annexation, you'll be voting to do a translational zoning, which is a county zoning to city zoning. The current county zoning is residential rural and residential suburban 20. Staff from Planning, Public Works, Stormwater, and then County Division Manager for Stormwater and Erosion are here tonight to help answer any questions that planning may not be the expert in. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, Donald Tool from the city attorney's office. I did just want to make one minor correction to what Alexander said, and there's no way he could have known. But I do want it to be completely clear on the record what the history of this project was. Actually, beginning in 2011, the developer had gone to the legislature. At that point, it was solely related to 751. At that point, it was solely related to 751 South. And then subsequently, the developer went back to the legislature in 2013, and in that bill, which was approved by the legislature, it basically said that both 751 South and Culver Farms would be annexed to the city June of this year, 2023. They then went back to the legislature a third time to try to get exactly what they wanted, and at that point, they did listen somewhat to the city. The city had concern about Culver Farms because the city had no jurisdiction, was not imposing its standards on the way that development was being constructed, and the city asked for Culver Farms not to, for it not to be automatically annexed into the city, but for council to have the option, which is presented to council tonight, because there was some concern about whether the infrastructure in this development would be constructed according to city standards or not. So I just wanted to add that little wrinkle, that there was a point at which the legislature did say it would be annexed this year, but in the subsequent legislature, legislation, the city actually requested for it to be at the city's option, and that's what's before council tonight.
And I have been talking to my fellow council folks, and to let folks in Culver Farms know that at this point, I do not see a vote to approve the annexation. I think all of us, at this point, are not voting in favor of that. We will allow you an opportunity to be heard, if you like, but I think you're going to get what you've asked for from this council. So. That is a straw vote, so that's why I have turned to the attorney to see if we could technically have the motions heard, vote on those motions. I do believe, am I stating it correctly, that at this point, it is five folks who are sitting here and saying that they will vote no to annex Culver Farms into the city, and so I wanted to turn with the, to the attorney to make sure that I could say that and that we could do that without hearing from everybody, unless you want to be heard.
So Mayor, the mayor, the one thing I would say is, the legislation does require that there be a public hearing. According to council's rules of procedure, that would allow 15 minutes per side. If there were proponents, they could have 15 minutes, and if there are opponents, they could have 15 minutes. But you can also open the public hearing, and if no one wants to speak, you can close the public hearing and then take the vote.
Okay, all right. So you have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council?
I just want to make sure that that presentation is made available to the general public. I don't think it's in our attachments, but I just want to make sure it's available. That's all.
All right, and I will now open the public hearing for those in the audience that wish to speak to us on this matter, if you'd like to be heard. If you would, state your name.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Brett Williams, and I live at 137 Turner Ridge Circle. A number of our neighbors are here tonight, and I just wanted to say thank you to the council for considering this very fairly. Frankly, none of us knew about this when we moved in. I've gone through all my closing documents, and it was a little bit of a mystery to us why the city would want to annex this property, charge us the taxes when you were unable, based on the way the gentleman stated, to be able to care for the infrastructure. And so personally, I think that this has reaffirmed our confidence in what we would think is common sense, and we're glad that our city council has seen it that way. And I'd just like to close by saying thanks to the mayor and Congressman Johnson, I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Jose Hyman for your service. Good luck as you go forward, and we look forward to continuing to be proud members of Durham County and members of the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I have a number of cards, and I certainly would not want to stifle anyone's right to come and speak. We have about 20 people. If you'd like to be heard at this time, you may do so, and I will pull your card. All right. With that being said, we will now declare the public hearing to be closed, and this matter is back before the council. I will give these cards to the clerk, so you'll know that is there as a record of your willingness to speak to this issue tonight. At this point, we are considering the three motions that we have before us for this matter. The first motion for our consideration is to, motion number one is to adopt an ordinance annexing Culver Farms Track into the city of Durham effective November 20th, 2023, in accordance with session law 2014-47. It's been moved by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
Mine is a no. When it first came on, it had, it wasn't open for me to vote.
Right, and yours?
It's like, right now, we're seeing results, and it was saying that before.
So we can take a hand vote, if you'd like, since we have difficulty. All right. All those in favor of annexation, you have the right to raise your left hand. All those who are not in favor of annexation, would you please raise your left hand? So that is a no vote for annexation of Culver Farms, of five. Second motion. And I'm understanding that, that's it. All done. Thank you all for coming tonight on this matter. All right, we now turn to item 17. It's going quite faster than we thought, right? Okay, here we go. Don't get excited, don't get excited. Now, the next item is agenda number 17. Agenda item number 17, which is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, simplifying codes for affordable development, and this is a public hearing, a zoning public hearing. I'm going to turn to Attorney Don O'Toole before we hear the staff report, so that he can explain to our audience and to our fellow council members exactly what that means and how our rules are affected by whether it is a zoning public hearing or a non-zoning public hearing. Attorney O'Toole.
Very good. Just so we're all clear, I'm going to read the council's rule of procedure on zoning public hearings, word for word, so there's no question. Rule 2.6.7b1, zoning, on questions involving amendments to the zoning ordinance, which is what the SCAD amendment is, and on other questions involving the presentation of opposing views, "The proponents of such questions shall be heard first. Proponents are limited to a total of 15 minutes, provided that up to five minutes of the 15 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents shall be heard after proponents. Opponents are limited to a total of 15 minutes. Proponents may next be heard in rebuttal, of course, only if they've reserved five minutes. The time of proponents or opponents may be extended by a majority vote of council members present. Where several speakers appear as proponents or opponents, the mayor may fix and apportion the permitted time among such speakers unless otherwise ordered by the council."
We will hear from our staff report first.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Bo DeBrinsky, Assistant Director with, or one of the assistant directors for the City County Planning Department. This text amendment, case TC220001, simplifying codes for affordable development, also known as SCAD, is a privately initiated text amendment that proposes to amend various provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance in order to incentivize affordable housing and to allow additional flexibility in siting and design predominantly for infill housing and small-scale commercial opportunities. The applicant team is here to present the specifics of these amendments tonight. The Planning Commission recommended denial on December 13th, 2022, by a vote of 6-6. As you may remember, this item was first scheduled for consideration on March 20th. It was then continued to May 1st, but was referred back to staff to be rescheduled for consideration after the July break. Over the course of the summer, planning staff hosted a series of meetings between the applicant team and representatives from the Inner Neighborhood Council, INC. As a result of those meetings, the applicant team made six changes to their proposal, and this is detailed in your staff report. On August 21st, this item was again before you, but was continued to today at the applicant's request to allow for additional engagement. The applicants met with your appointed task force three times in late October, and as a result, made one change to their proposal by increasing the affordable rental term in the PATH program from five to 15 years. In addition to the staff report, your, oops. In addition to the staff report, your agenda materials contain an updated staff analysis, which you had seen previously. This is labeled Attachment M, that is organized with ordinance provisions grouped by topic in order to facilitate consideration of the proposed changes. This item has tentatively been scheduled for consideration by the Board of County Commissioners on December 11th. Two motions will be required for this item, one to approve an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, and the second to approve the corresponding consistency statement. Staff and the applicant team are both available for questions, if you have them.
You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from the members of the council? Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question. So in Attachment M in our packet, which is the detailed analysis that you mentioned by the staff, there are a couple of spaces where the staff say that they recommend the change, but also recommend evaluating the effectiveness and impacts of the change as part of the UDO rewrite. I don't understand whether you're recommending that we implement that change now and then evaluate it later, or that we save that change and implement and evaluate it later as part of the UDO rewrite.
Great question, Councilmember Johnson. So where we responded to a particular provision in that manner, the idea honestly was the provision is something that we support in theory and in terms of, you know, the intended outcome, most likely, but as a part of the UDO rewrite, we would potentially do things differently, word it differently, and there would be more research, and so that was sort of just how we addressed proposals that we were generally in favor of, but is not necessarily the exact language that we would use.
Okay, so that's a recommendation to push that to the UDO rewrite, though you expect that something along those lines would be considered favorably by the Planning Department as part of the UDO.
That is correct. Now, this is prior to, so that may change while we conduct that analysis and the UDO is drafted, but.
Great, thank you.
Before we get started with our speakers, I do have two speakers. Dr. Michelle Laws, are you speaking in opposition or for, as a proponent or opponent on this matter? Okay. And Angel Dozier, are you speaking in opposition or as a proponent or opponent of this matter? All right. Now, as you heard from the rules, the order of business, as we've been told tonight, is supposed to be to allow each side 15 minutes, and then, and then, other than by a vote of council, is it extended? I will tell you that I hope that we will have a vote preliminarily before we get started because we have 13 persons who have signed up to speak as proponents, and you have 32 signed up as opponents. So if you do the math, you're going to be way over 15 minutes, even if you, you're going to, we'll have to cut it down by a lot of people. So I would like for us to go ahead and see if we can vote to extend the time for each side to have an equal amount of time, and we will start with, it'll be 32 times three. So move. Wait a minute, and then you'll have the, let's get the math right. So you have 32 times three minutes for the opponents, and then that time would then be also allocated to our proponents with them starting off. Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna, at this point, if you have not signed up to speak either by card or by on the internet, we will now close it because we had 32, and I need to be able to get the timing right. So for our opponents, they will have a total of 96 minutes.
It's 33, it's 99.
99 minutes total, so that will be divided up, as you see fit amongst the 13 proponents who would then have some time for rebuttal. We'll do the best we can in keeping track of time. If you have not signed up, it is about too late for that now, getting ready to be, okay? So, okay. Folks have requested that I keep the three-minute time limit, so this is the only time that they're going to be able to hear it. I'm sure everybody won't take three minutes, but because of what happened last time, I do feel inclined that everybody that wants to speak, we give them the time to speak, especially since we're starting so early with it. You know, it's not like we're starting this matter at nine o'clock, we're at quarter of eight. Okay, so at this point, I would like to ask for a motion to consider allowing each of our speakers tonight to have the same time, and that time be extended to accommodate both the opponents' and proponents' desire to speak to us tonight. Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Jose Hyman, seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. All those in favor, if you'd just raise your left hand. All right, and Mayor Pro Tem is getting in now, but it passes, and I'm sure he would have voted to extend the time, so we'll see. It passes. You now, you now, just really, thank you for coming, Mayor Pro Tem, because you need to have a little bit tonight. All right, so we're going to start off with our proponents. We'll start you off with, um, come on, let's see. Let's see, Mr. Anthony, I think you're the major proponent, so we're going to ask you to come and be heard. This public hearing is open, and how much time can we start you with, Mr. Anthony?
I'm going to be extremely brief. I'll be surprised if I go beyond two minutes.
Okay, all right, and then we will call each of the folks who have signed up as proponents. The next after Mr. Anthony would be Ms. Tiffany Elder, followed by Brian Vaughn, followed by Cliff Cradle, and Ryan Hurley, in that order. Mr. Anthony, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, city councilors, public opponents and proponents. Three months ago, I suggested the community engage in further conversation about the text amendment we're considering tonight. We had what I thought were productive public engagement sessions, made some friends. Tonight, we are here to support the city council in its effort to complete this action regarding as they see fit. We are prepared to support what the Planning Department and the council recommends. The Planning Department can confirm that the original text amendment submission nearly two years ago has been modified extensively since it first arrived in their office. In short, I will support the recommendations of the councilors in the Planning Department. We do have supporters here, thankfully, who are here to present a summary of why we believe this text amendment is actually good for Durham, and that to wait for the update of the UDO for what could be two, three, or more years is not a good thing for the community when there are some things that need to be fixed soon. We're going to talk about how We're going to talk about how we save energy, how we improve local development practices, how the environment will be improved, how extensive our city civic engagement was, how the text amendment will result in better planning of projects. We'll talk about how housing economics are actually improved because increasing supply does lower rents and purchase prices. A better entitlement process, simplification of applications, and faith-based housing, opportunity creation, historic preservation, equitable development practices, and expanding affordable housing, improving infill development resulting in better architecture, walkability, reduction in sprawl, better local retail, and generally better health of our community. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and City Council members. My name is Tiffany Elder. I am a Realtor and builder with 20 years of experience in housing citizens in our city. I've also restored quite a few historic homes and structures in our city, and currently the codes and flexibility forces homeowners to tear down restorable homes in order to be able to build additional housing on the same lot. And no one likes this problem, and these reforms help to correct that. As a person who loves historic homes and an owner of historic property that I would love to be able to leverage to create more housing in our city, but that I don't have to, I hope I don't have to demolish in order to be able to do so, I support reforms that enable citizens like myself to save more of them and to do this. This evening, you have the benefit of having citizens and professionals across several disciplines here, all in real estate development, and all asking for support of this reform. This includes folks who believe so strongly in its benefits that despite the fact that they stand to make less money once these reforms are passed because of the red tape that will be cleared up, thereby eliminating the need for these professionals to usher projects through the process, they're still here in support of this. There are a lot of good people doing good things here in Durham in housing, and quite a few of them are in this room, and I hope you will support SCAD and help us to do more. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Vaughn, followed by Mr. Cradle, Mr. Hurley, and Mr. Tom Hennessy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian Vaughn. I live at 2118 Copeland Way, Durham County, speaking in support of the text amendment. Since 2016, I've been involved in urban design and development issues here in Durham. Today, I work as a landscape designer at a local firm and volunteer my time hosting events and mentoring others in the landscape architecture community. My support for these amendments is as personal as it is professional. While driving for a ride-sharing company to make ends meet during graduate school, I met many folks in my generation and younger who faced significant barriers to homeownership. I think often of the conversations that I had with my passengers and their desire to live in a home that they owned with their families. The truth is that the current options are far more limited for my generation than the options that many in this room have enjoyed. It doesn't have to be that way. These text amendments, I believe, are a way to start fixing that. Professionally, I see a tremendous potential for folks with training in land planning to enable a better Durham. Many with my training learn in school about the innumerable benefits of building healthy, walkable communities, only to join the profession and spend their hours doing uninspired yet code-compliant designs for suburban sprawl. The amendments will unlock a renaissance of homegrown urban design here in Durham. This amendment, though, is bigger than setbacks and roof heights and parking requirements. This amendment is about people and the environment that we create together, about the kind of Durham that my passengers attain owning a piece with their families, and the young designers and builders who materialize it. I want to live in that Durham, and I strongly urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
My name is Cliff Cradle with Cradle Engineering Company, 204 East Markham Avenue. I am a local surveyor and civil engineer, and we have been serving Durham community for over 100 years now. The first summer I worked in this field was 1972, so I've been working with our ordinance and with our planning department for longer than anybody's been in our planning department. So I've seen quite a lot of changes and look forward to continuing that work in Durham. The, I'm here tonight to talk about some reforms to our zoning ordinance with, or UDO with these text amendments. The houses that I helped the individuals build and builders build haven't really changed a lot over the years. The methods are a lot the same. The number of lots may have changed, but the amount of red tape, the amount of ordinance, the amount of regulations we have to go through is increasingly large, and this text amendment reduces a lot of those so we can get back to building those houses and helping these citizens figure out where they want to put those houses on that lot, which is what I do. So as a text amendment, what I want to make clear is that as we make revisions to the text amendment, they are positive. There was an amendment, or there was an ordinance that had multiple rear lot lines, and when we were doing an addition to a house, we weren't able to do the addition. Matter of fact, according to that ordinance at that time, the house would have never been able to be built. So we got together, talked to the Planning Department, and that text amendment was changed. And now there's positive from these text amendments. So this is greatly needed. This will simplify the ordinance so that we can actually work with people and build their houses and make their dreams come true on that aspect. And it will make my life simpler and the people I work with in that it reduces the amount of regulations that we need to go through. So I am a proponent for this. Thank you.
Mr. Hurley, followed by Mr. Hennessy, Mr. Bach, Randall Lenoir, Steve Toler. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, City Council members and staff. I'm Ryan Hurley. I'm a Durham citizen and local business, local retail business owner for 15 years here in Durham. I've been an active supporter of our small business community, including helping to create the Small Business Recovery Fund during COVID, and I am a proponent of this text amendment. Durham's local retail sector lags far behind many comparable cities to us, and that's in large part today because we don't have enough small-scale commercial buildings. Access to these spaces and affordability is absolutely critical for our local retailers and restaurateurs. The more of these spaces we have, the lower the rents will be, and the more likely that our local businesses will be able to buy their space. This is more and more critical as the local restaurant and retail model, if you all don't know, is beleaguered. It is in hard times as we look across our local retail landscape. It is rife with corporate behomaths that it's very hard for local retailers to compete with. So I am a huge proponent of allowing our small-scale local developers to build small-scale commercial buildings, especially because the corporate developers will not do this. They're going to build more and more of the large corporate projects that we see. If we allow SCAD to move forward, our small business economy will flourish, and it will be a match between our local retailers and restaurants and our small local developers. Our local storefront businesses create jobs, train our workforce, and generate essential tax revenue. Just as importantly, they help define our culture and the brand of Durham. They help us stand out as a community. Please pass SCAD. Thank you so much.
My name is Thomas Hennessy from West Fourth, and together, I'm here tonight with my friend Q Cherry. Q works for the Durham VA in the Housing Department, and I'm here to present to council and tell council, I'm very proud to say that part of my business, part of my company, we provide housing for veterans, we provide housing for vouchers recipients, and I'm also here to say that it is becoming increasingly difficult as values rise and rents rise to continue building or offering homes for rent to those who seek housing through the voucher programs, whether it's through the HUD-VAS program, the VA program, or through the Housing Authority. I do believe SCAD is very critical to controlling prices, reducing rents, building supply, and allowing individuals to build properties, not just for the high rents, but for the individuals, for all residents, current residents and future residents of Durham. Specifically, I'm extremely excited that ADUs can potentially be duplexes at a larger square foot, so you could potentially see smaller one-bedroom units, not just larger units for larger rents. I'm extremely excited that under 10 and under townhomes can be built without a site plan. As of right now, we don't see many infill townhomes being built because it's too costly, too timely, too expensive, too difficult. And I think that's super exciting to see that infill townhomes are a possibility in the urban tier of Durham. Additionally, flag lots, utilizing a full-size flag lot 20 feet wide to branch off five full-size lots, whether they're for single-family houses or duplexes. Right now, you can only just have one on a 20-foot pole, but SCAD allows you to have up to five, an increased supply. So I'm here again to say that I'm a supporter, and I hope that council passes the text amendment. Thank you.
I have Dan Bach, Randall Lenoir, Steve Toler, Alan Sprunt, Philip Azar, Quorum Howser, Rand Baron, and those are all the cards that I have signed up in person to speak, and we do, I think, have at least one person online. Yes, sir.
Hi, Dan Bach, 205 Alma Marl Street. I'm speaking in favor. There's good development and there's bad development. We do too much of the bad kind in here, outward sprawl, car-oriented sprawl. This change promotes more of the good kind in walkable and bikeable parts of town. I'm lucky enough to live in one of those parts of town. I like seeing new housing being built near me. I think Durham is really lucky to have developers who want to build this kind of development, the good kind. I don't understand our process. I don't understand why it takes a developer-initiated text amendment before you all will vote on eliminating parking mandates in Durham. Lots of cities, other cities are doing it, but I guess that's what our system is, and so now that it is before you, I hope you vote to pass it. These are mostly small technical changes. It doesn't solve the housing shortage by itself. It's a small step in the right direction. I hope you vote to pass it tonight. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Lenoir, followed by Mr. Toler, Mrs. Sprunt, Mr. Azar, Howser, Baron, and Dan Jewell.
Good evening. I'm Randall Lenoir. We have a 23-year-old design and build business located in the Durham Central Park neighborhood, and we design and build high-performance homes. All the homes that we build are certified to the National Green Building Standard. I'm also a professor at NC State College of Design, where I teach courses focused on sustainable design and build. The proposed text amendments encourage building well-designed, smaller houses on more compact sites, and that helps us create walkable communities. Shorter distances to the places we go, more walking, less driving. By focusing on compact, walkable infill projects rather than on suburban sprawl, these reforms will help Durham reduce per capita fossil fuel use. I was pleased to advise on the Sustainable Alternatives and Green Building Certification definitions in the text amendment. If these reforms are voted in, it will be the first instance of green building principles and standards introduced into our UDO. I strongly encourage you to vote yes on these reforms, and I thank you very much for allowing me to speak to fight for a better Durham.
My name is Steve Toler, and I reside at 8709 Milhouse Lane. I'm speaking in support of the amendment. As a resident of Durham since 1977, I've led multiple massive community engagement efforts in Durham, including the 2003-2007 countywide bond referendums, the 2011 education sales tax referendum, and I led the effort to create the Little River Regional Park in northern Durham. None of these had more community engagement than this process, not one. After a first draft of these amendments was submitted to the Planning Department, the Planning Department made 903 revisions. Then after an additional 61 revisions were made as a result of input from public and from the Planning Commission. In the end, at least 29 citizens wrote parts of the amendments, including local architects, builders, carpenters, nonprofit leaders, and planners. The version you're considering tonight is the 43rd version of this amendment. I'm very proud of this community outreach and engagement led by the best local talent in our community. Thank you for your respectful consideration and leadership in passing this tonight. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Thank you.
Mr. Alan Sprunt, followed by Mr. Philip Azar.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come up here and express some of our thoughts. My name is Alan Sprite. I live at 1003 LeMond Avenue. I am the president emeritus of Trinity Design Build. We just celebrated 20 years of doing mostly historic preservation and green building in Durham. I come from a long line of tree huggers, so I'm going to talk just briefly about some of the environmental motivations for passing this amendment. Just as a couple examples, current code encourages us to cut trees down when we don't want to. Current code encourages us to flatten lots, which causes erosion and other issues when it's really not necessary and it does more damage than good. The text amendment, as mentioned before, is something that's likely to reduce urban sprawl and increase higher-density building within the Durham kind of urban area. So in kind of just speaking specifically to some of the environmental reasons why, I hope that you all vote for yes. Those are just a few examples. I think other people have made some pretty strong arguments with respect to how it would make more walkable communities, and I think a lot of the other thoughts people have already mentioned, so I'll just wind it up there. I hope you vote yes. Thank you.
My name is Philip Azar. I live at 917 Monmouth Avenue. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I hope you pass the amendment. The amendment contains provisions that are clarifying, broadly beneficial, and in some instances genuinely progressive. The PATH homeownership provisions are among the most progressive and should be passed without further changes. Durham has a long history of affordable, bone- Durham has a long history of affordable bonuses, affordability bonuses, that were unused for long periods of time. We should not repeat this mistake. Let's pass the PATH homeownership provisions as they currently stand. We are not currently meeting our homeownership goals outlined when we passed the housing bond. And we are not demonstrating that we can close that gap. Some of that challenge is financial. We've reallocated some of the bond funding to more immediate affordable housing needs. The other challenge is that our affordable housing nonprofits have not been able to return to pre-pandemic production levels, let alone hit the incremental levels of production anticipated with the housing bond. Moreover, because our production has dipped, there's a gap that needs to be made up. Let's give local builders a chance. The best that can happen is that they rise to the challenge. The worst that can happen is that our affordable housing homeownership productivity levels remain where they are today. Let's try and boost them. Let's try and do something different. Thank you for your consideration, and I urge you to pass the amendment.
Mr. Howsey, followed by Dan Jewell, I'm sorry, Rand Baron and Dan Jewell, in that order.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Topher Thomas. I live at 811 Gerard Street, and I am the founder of Quorum Houses. We are a small equitable housing company that focuses on building ADUs and doing other sorts of small incremental development, focused on working to stop or slow down displacement, stop and slow down gentrification. And I am here in support of the SCAD amendments. There's a lot I could say. I'm sorry. It's been a big week for me. But I think about perfect being the enemy of the good. And I had examples I wanted to give, but my words are fading me. But I think doing something is better than doing nothing. And when I think about what SCAD gives us the opportunity to do, it gives the opportunity to change the status quo. Things have been going in a certain direction, and this allows us, allows me specifically, I know the opportunity to do more creative housing that I wouldn't be able to do otherwise. I'm thinking of right now, who's coming to mind? Is a pastor in a church congregation. And they've wanted to build a small, tiny home community behind their church, and currently they are unable to do that. They have good that they want to do that zoning currently prohibits them from doing. And if SCAD passes, they would be able to do it. And not only would they be able to do it, they'd be able to save somewhere around $70,000 in development costs that would translate to $200 a month in savings for the people who live there. And to me, that's worth it. So I'm in support of SCAD, and I hope you all pass it tonight.
Sir, if I could get you to come and put your name on this card. Thank you. Mr. Baron, and followed by Mr. Jewell. And those will be all the cards that I have for folks who are here in person. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor-elect, members of council. I am not a real estate professional. Rather than repeat the points that many professionals have made, and I am here to address tonight, I thought I'd say a few words about respect and professionalism. When I led Topher Thomas's op-ed in Indy this morning, both those qualities shone through. It was so clear that he knows, loves, and respects the city, and that he knows what he is doing. His real experience in building genuinely affordable housing brings a true breath of fresh air to this debate. The debate around SCAD has rarely had an air of either respect or professionalism. So much vitriol, so much screaming past each other, so much lack of good faith. I have been especially disappointed in the disrespect shown to the consummate professionals on city staff, including from someone this day. City planning staff have analyzed SCAD extremely thoroughly and have identified the majority of provisions as being mostly minor changes to the code that would have a positive effect on density, environmental preservation, and affordability in Durham. In contrast to the often awful discussion elsewhere, staff have been respectful and professional throughout. I fully believe that they have the best interest of the city and its people in mind. As the recent election clearly shows, Durhamites are very ready to move past the vitriol to a future of professionalism and respect. I urge you to pass all provisions recommended by our wonderful city staff tonight and to use your best judgment to tweak, add, and improve. Durham's future is bright. I urge you to choose to enable more density, more growth, more environmental preservation, and to pay more attention to the quiet professionals than to the loudest voices in the room. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Dan Jewell. I live at 1025 Gloria Avenue in Trinity Park. I'd like to speak about the positive benefits of a better entitlement process. During my 38 years as a landscape architect working on approvals in Durham, we've gone through four zoning ordinances just in that time. We're about to work on a fifth, each more complicated than the previous. In the early '90s, I could get a site plan approved in two to three weeks. Today, that same plan would take five to six months at least, primarily because of the greatly increased complexity of the rules that we've created, which in turn require the need for much more thorough and longer reviews by your excellent staff. Too many small builders and even nonprofessional regular citizens now resort to calling me and folks like me needing help finding a way to work through the unnecessary and burdensome barriers of our current code. It's way too complex, way too expensive to interpret and implement, and way too risky for many small local builders and individual citizens to even dare try. Just imagine if you're someone trying to build an accessory dwelling, carve out a small house lot, perhaps built a few small townhouses on your property. These are well-intentioned folks, not all professional builders, just trying to provide more housing, sometimes for a family member, sometimes to create income for retirement or put a kid through school. These people all need a simplified code. They deserve a simplified code, which is what we are trying to do. The amendments before you this evening will make it easier for small developers and individuals to do really cool things, I think. But they'll definitely be bad for my practice because we get paid a lot to deal with these very complicated codes. However, these amendments are needed to simplify our codes for small incremental developers, and that is good for Durham. And that's why I'm in support of this amendment and hope that you will be as well. Thank you for your time.
I believe those are all the cards that I have for our proponents. And we do have, I believe, one person on the internet, Mr. Bob Chapman. Mr. Chapman, if you're there, you may speak. Mr. Chapman? Mark, can you see if you see him up there?
Yes, ma'am. His microphone appears. Madam Clerk, can you see him?
I see him. I've asked him to unmute. I've allowed him to speak.
Mr. Chapman, if you can unmute for me.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Bob Chapman. I live at 2525 Lanier Place in Durham. Since the 1960s, we've gone from a 16-page zoning code to over 2,000 pages of development regulations today. Many of those new regulations make it more difficult to build affordable housing, and they reinforce economic rather than racial segregation. The recently adopted Expanded Housing Choices text amendments, which were carefully informed by a practitioners panel of dedicated small local developers, began the process of change. The text amendments you're considering today are one more step toward empowering local, small-scale incremental developers, builders, and citizens committed to housing equity and affordability. Thank you. I hope you'll vote to approve the text amendments.
All right. I think that was our last speaker proponents for this matter. And we have about, maybe about 35 total minutes that they used. As I indicated earlier, we have about 32 speakers who are speaking in opposition that will be given three minutes apiece. So once they finish, we will deduct their total, the total from the proponents, from the total of the opponents. And that is the time that you will have in rebuttal for the proponents. So we will begin now with our opponents. And I will call five names. Stephen Neal, Joseph Fleming, Herman Spurling, Jeremy Bergman, and Seth Hurley will be our first five speakers. You will have three minutes apiece. Now, we're going to hold you to that three minutes because it's a lot of people. So we're going to hold you to that three minutes. If you need less, we appreciate it, but please do not go over. I will let you know once you hit that mark. Thank you.
I'll go way under three. Stephen Neal, Durham resident with Lee'sville Road Coalition. The Coalition urges City Council to vote no on SCAD. This far-reaching endeavor intends to take away the power and control that the council and its team have over the future of our city. Durham is a business. Businesses don't allow their clients or vendors, depending on your point of view, to tell them how to run their business. Yet this is precisely what Jim Anthony's team is doing. We ask that City Council take back control of the process and entertain the elements of SCAD that will be good for Durham. And there are some. We're not opposed to all of this as part of the next UDO right. Lowering developers' costs is no guarantee that housing will become more affordable. In fact, nothing in SCAD really estimates the savings that would be passed through to consumers from the affordability being provided to the developers or what they're asking for. Right now, Durham's average home price is $421,000. It's gone up 6.6% in the last month, while total homes for sale are down 26%. So the concept here that, you know, there's been assumptions that made once we have enough built that housing prices will come down. Unfortunately, developers can sit on land even after building is approved if they don't see enough profit to finish the job. And this has happened in many overbuilt areas. And I would ask all of you to look at the DataWorks data to show where Durham sits right now and how many homes we have and how many homes we need. Because I think you're under some different opinions than what DataWorks has actually done the work to look at. I was going to talk about public-private partnerships because I know this is a subject that our incoming mayor is very keen on, but I'm going to kind of leave that alone. I think this is one of those public-private partnerships that may help, you know, let's get more public-private partnerships. If you pass this, the sweetheart deal that Jim Anthony is getting is going to be something that can be very attractive to other corporations. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fleming, I have two cards for you. Would that be correct?
Joseph Fleming? Yes, because I did it on Friday, then I did it tonight.
Okay, all right.
I'm making sure I got heard.
All right, Mr. Fleming. You're about to be heard right now. Followed by Mr. Spurling, Mr. Jeremy Bergman, and Mr. Seth Hurley. You're on, sir.
My name is Joseph Fleming. I live at 2104 Cedar Grove Drive. I'm a complete Durhamite all my life. Moving on. I am opposed to SCAD for many reasons. And I know that we are going to have many escalation here, but the point of matter is no, SCAD has not been profitable in my viewpoint. Couple of things I want to address. If SCAD is approved, it will have a tremendous negative impact on the city's future housing landscape, changing the character of our traditional neighborhoods by increasing taxes, also creating a drainage, water runoff, and deforestation. SCAD amendment would create more density that will not be evenly distributed between the city and the county. Working-class communities, rural communities, traditional African-American community neighborhoods, where the land is much historically cheaper, they will be pressured to have more dwellings built in their community. More than anything else, Durham has seen an increase of their housing prices by 6.3%. And that will continue. More than anything else, Durham has a background, or at least a history, of a place in which people can come and live. But with the continued escalation of private entities coming to Durham, making the minority people move from their communities, things have changed. Taken from the state of the South, events in the 2022 minority neighborhoods witnessed a displacement of their people from 10% to 37%. And the renting process had increased 35% since 2017. SCAD amendment claims it will build more affordable homes. That is not the case. That is not true. Our nonprofit organization have been instrumental of being the main element to build the houses. What I'm talking about Habitat for Humanity. They have been the main element. Last year, Habitat for Humanity built 17 homes over the price range of $170,000. That is quite significant. But the point of the matter is the organization, I mean, the homeowners organization, not homeowners, but the organization that builds private entities, they are supposed to be involved in this process. But the state does not hold them to that account because it's not constitutional to hold them to that account. Certain things that can make prices increase in our price and make things escalate for more nonprofit homes could be the aspect of having progressive taxes, could be the process of having also rent control and also a wage process, better wage process. All that could happen, but it's unconstitutional and unlawful. Getting to our rural neighbors, our rural neighbors.
Mr. Fleming, you have three months, Mr. Fleming. If I could ask you to finish your sentence and then, sir, your time will be up. I'm holding everybody to three minutes tonight.
Okay, let me finish my sentence. Our rural neighbors have been hurt tremendously pertaining to damage to their homes, their wells, dust build, carcinogen. All those particular things have hurt our neighbors because of no one not holding our developers accountable for the things that they do.
Thank you, sir.
We must hold people accountable for the action which they're doing. I oppose SCAD.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Spurling?
Hi there. I'm Herman Spurling, 2628 Bloomsbury Manor Drive in Durham. Metamare, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Attorney O'Toole, Deputy Manager Ferguson, and everyone else on the City Council. I'm not going to present myself with expertise in this specific area. I don't have it. I don't think any of us have that. I can tell you in my investment portfolio, commercial REITs are in the toilet. I can tell you that there's a lot of vacancies in retail business, and I can tell you that the internet is growing. So we have to be a little careful about when we talk about availability of housing, that we aren't taking supermarkets that are closing down, which might be turned into mini-shopping centers, might be turned into pharmacies, might be turned into things that will serve the community. I'm not expert in that. What I am expert in is in confidence in government. And that's what I want to talk to you about tonight. Most of us have heard stories about the alleged improprieties in our Supreme Court, the appearance of impropriety. One of our colleagues suffered the indignation of being charged with crimes she didn't commit. Four of you ignored the opportunity to celebrate that announcement with her. One of you tweeted out at the first of these meetings a note that many interpreted as being the keeping of an enemies list. One of you was asked to recuse herself. One of you was asked to recuse herself because of the appearance of impropriety and that there was a family benefit in this amendment being passed. Tonight's vote is not just about a SCAD amendment. It's about confidence in government. I want to be proud of my city government. I want my kids to be proud of our city government, our county government, and our federal government. Tonight, you are seeing in a microcosm, three to one of your constituents saying, please don't do this. Three to one. And most of those that are saying, please do it, have a financial interest in you passing As an elected official, I think you have a responsibility beyond SCAD. Please, vote for our democracy, a government for and by the people. Thank you very much.
Followed by Mr. Hurley, I'm sorry.
My name is Jeremy Bergeron. I live at 112 East Piedmont in South Side. I'd like to yield my time to Mr. Fleming, if you'll allow.
I do not believe that we do that.
All right.
At this point.
All right. I live in the highly gentrified South Side. I'm just a citizen. I came here, I threw some word grenades, you know, in the process, so I apologize for I want to read this, this is from Habitat for Humanity. It says, "We are dedicated to honoring Durham's neighborhoods and their unique diversity and culture. We seek to preserve long-term affordability as it relates to the promotion of generational wealth. We are committed to being a responsible, affordable housing builder and lender in Durham, working in partnership with other affordable housing developers, community members, the city, and county of Durham, and other advocates. We cannot succumb to pressure from donors, volunteers, and our former employees to support agendas that do not reflect our mission and commitments to the community at large in exchange for donations, services, or items of value. And at the end, the Board of Directors of Habitat for Humanity in Durham does not support SCAD as it's currently written, will not apologize for actions related to SCAD, and will not reverse decisions made in March and April 2023 regarding SCAD." I didn't really want to come here, except a few months ago, I found out this guy, Brother Ray, got my house, you feel me? And I know he wouldn't have liked this. I didn't even know him, and so I felt compelled to come here and say that. And I also didn't want to come here and then someone talking about low-income veterans units, and I live in a low-income veteran unit. If I had, if I knew, and I ain't trying to throw shade, man, but if I knew you're gonna bring a brother from the vet, from the VA. Man, I had a sign that said Veterans Against SCAD. I had a, a thing that said Veterans Against SCAD. I was gonna go down to VA today. I might go tomorrow, man. I might go tomorrow. And we need your help, man. I took my son to the meeting. I watched him online. I wa, I took my son to the last meeting, and some of my sisters in the crowd said, liar. They said, who's a liar? I said, Bob Chapman. And I tried to explain it away, but he was lying. The conversation, he lives in the West End. The conversation to my eight-year-old son in less than five minutes went to Dr. King and Emmett Till. I sh, you not. And I'm not trying to be dramatic, man. This is serious. When enough people are saying, stop, man, you just gotta stop, man, and work with the people.
Thank you all for having me. I'd like to start by introducing myself. My name is Seth Hurley. I am a high school senior who goes to the Durham School of the Arts. I was born in Durham and have lived my life in the Duke Park neighborhood, and I'm here as a member of the Triangle Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. We have some serious concerns about how much damage SCAD could cause to Durham and to its residents, and after the recent election in which we, the citizens of Durham, elected our first candidate backed by the Triangle Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America, it is clear what the people want. We do not want more million-dollar, single-family homes. We do not want gentrification, which targets and destroys our most vulnerable communities. We want real, affordable housing. SCAD will reduce the required affordable housing period from 30 to five to 15 years for rental and first-sale-for-sale units. Again, 30 to five to 15. This is not what we, the people, mean when we say affordable. SCAD allows developers to lower the quality of affordable housing beyond what it currently is, forcing the city's workers, the backbone of our economy, to live in slums and modern-day ghettos. This is not what we, the people, mean when we say affordable. As I'm sure you know, Jim Anthony is the figurehead of SCAD. When speaking to Inc., he said that gentrification is necessary to erase the blight. The blight he is speaking of is people struggling to get by, working three jobs and a night shift, trying to keep food on the table while still having a roof to sleep under. If you vote in favor of SCAD, you are voting for racism and you are voting for gentrification. If you vote for SCAD, you have to live with the fact that you sided with a notorious right-wing capitalist in destroying our communities, which need the most protection in an effort to line the pockets of developers. Affordability is very important, but SCAD is not the way to do it. Thank you for your time.
We have now five more names. Donna Frederick, Jack Wagsstaff, Pamela Andrews, Ajax Woolley, and James Chavis. We have three minutes apiece.
Good evening, and I'm Donna Frederick, and I live in Bragtown, Durham. I'm coming here just at the tail end of what SCAD will not. I was on the task force, and one of the things I, I heard was that the PATH part of the SCAD was going to be thrown out. Then I see it's changed now from five to 15. I mean, we were sitting in the room, so somewhere it changed. But anyway, so SCAD will not make a meaningful contribution to affordable housing. We've heard that. PATH is not really the, one of the contributions in the SCAD development. The SCAD proponents worked with the planning staff for nearly a year, a year, before the public even had known what was coming forward to them. SCAD's proponents eye by large developers, landlords, and real estate investors. And I will say, it's not for the people who are small developers that are trying to do the good for Durham. That is not what's gonna happen. It's gonna open the war win for other people to come in and do what you've undone. SCAD, their interest in homes and lives have been overmatched. They are alienated by the process. We are last to learn and last to be consulted. The main problem with SCAD was that the public was last to know about what was coming forth. The imbalance of access and time and resources is anti-democratic. This is no way for the city to run its progressive business. I know we can do better than that. Thank you all for coming tonight and giving up your time, and for you also to please not approve SCAD. Thank you.
I'm not giving my address, because I know somebody got a hit list, and I'm probably on it, so I'm, so I'm gonna stay off of it tonight. Let me say one thing about.
Get your name first, though. State your name.
Do I have to do that? Because they still, I'm on the hit list now.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Apple and Wagsstaff, and I live in Durham. Yeah, I live in Durham. Simplify code for affordable development. Let me say that again. Simplify code for affordable development, not affordable housing. So this was never designed for, I don't think Mr. Anthony just woke up in Raleigh one morning and said, oh, I want to go to Durham, and I want to help some poor people find some housing. I don't think that happened. I think Mr. Anthony spent a lot of time thinking about this gentrification rule, and I think he knows where the money lies. I think he has some people up here, because it was said early in the game that they have four votes. They have four votes. We know that. But the unfortunate part about it is, when you look around this room tonight, the, how many people was it that spoke for this project? All had a vested interest. I didn't see but one citizen. Where you at, possum? One citizen, and his vested interest is called the PAs, those people. So there was really nobody up here speaking on behalf of the citizenship. But when you look out in this audience now to the opponents, these are citizens. We're not experts at this, but we are experts at knowing what our community needs and wants. I cannot take one more day riding down Fayetteville Street, watching a female sleep on the sidewalk, undressed at least twice a day, and some other things, and then drive up the block and watch more of this going on, and we got this guy comes in here and say, he's gonna help us with that. He's gonna build some affordable housing. It's not gonna happen. At a hundred, at two, $450,000 a pop, I don't know who's affordable to, but I know it's not affordable to the people that are suffering the most. And as the mayor said when she first got elected, the people closer to the pain are not the people that SCAD is for. So I urge you to not support this tonight and listen to the people.
My name is Pamela Andrews, Wake Forest Highway. First of all, I sincerely say to Mayor O'Neill how much I appreciate your service, to Monique Hoesley-Hyman, I thank you, and to Ms. Johnson, I thank you guys for your service to our, to our turnout down. So what I want to say from a dear friend of mine who was on the task force, she sent out some highlights, and this is what she said to us. She said, "Although they market SCAD as primarily allowing infill development within the city limits, out of 132 SCAD provisions, 122 new provisions expressly apply to city and county." When this was pointed out at one of the task force meetings, Mr. Anthony's response to HOAs would limit dense development in the county, that's not true. Everyone in the county does not live in a community with an HOA, for one. If SCAD is intended to be limited to infill within the city limits, it would say that, but it definitely does not say that. SCAD will reduce the already small transparency of development decisions to nonexistent. Under SCAD, almost all development applications will be by right and granted administratively behind the closed doors of the planning department. There will be no notice to the community and no public hearings. Suddenly, the bulldozers would show up on the land next to you, and that's it. At most, there might be a neighborhood meeting with a developer at which neighbors have absolutely no power, which is often the case. SCAD doesn't provide any safeguards to neighbors against blasting and other damages, which southeast Durham has incurred every single week. I got more calls this week, more emails this week saying, please come, Pam, they're in my backyard blasting. It will not reduce the buffer, the buffer requirements will be reduced around some residential projects. Small details like this have huge impacts to residential homes. Sometimes we don't see these impacts until the changes are already done. We've seen buffer reductions around our creeks, which are already impaired, along with variances that are given to these buffers. Sound Rivers continues to monitor the devastation of Lit Creek and other creeks. Just ask the residents of southeast Durham with blasting in their property lines, own their property lines, where it blasted down 25 to 30 feet. Our mayor's been there, Dr. Hyman's been there, Ms. Freeman's been there, 30, 25, I'm sorry, Mr. Middleton came out, 25 to 30 feet on a property line. Ask them how much buffers are important. Please do not pass SCAD.
I might want to follow you, actually. Good evening, Council. Mayor O'Neill, thank you for your vital leadership over the past two years. My comments are focused on an exchange I witnessed at the SCAD task force meetings.
If you would just state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Ajax Woolley, 408 Bonner Avenue. SCAD task force meetings on the 25th and 27th of October, which included several friends and colleagues I hold in high regard, some of whom spoke here this evening, on both sides of the issue. A major policy element in SCAD, the PATH program, P-A-T-H program, section 6.6.4, is included in the proposal before you tonight. The trouble is that at the October 25th SCAD task force meeting, I heard the applicant verbally state an opinion that this program should be eliminated from the proposal. These meetings are online. You can see them on YouTube if you want to check. The timestamp is around one hour 16 minutes. Mr. Anthony, the applicant, said, quote, "I will say, as the proponent, the PATH piece of the SCAD project, I'm under no illusion that we're going to pass SCAD as it's written. No one in our camp is expecting that to happen, nor are we pushing for that to happen. We actually are here to have a dialogue about what ought to be changed. So PATH is one of those areas within the document where it may be simpler to set it aside," end quote. And then Councilmember Freeman called for anyone to voice their objections, and I heard a consensus that the PATH program could be set aside. And then one opponent, Ms. Joyner, wisely asked, quote, "Can we clarify what set aside means?" End quote. And the applicant, Mr. Anthony, answered, quote, "Set aside means it gets eliminated." End quote. Looking at the staff memo in Attachment B, we see that the PATH program is still included in the proposal, and thankfully, our planning staff are extremely diligent, thorough, and As the memo states, the task force met with the applicant, and the proposed draft reflects the applicant's effort to address concerns raised in those meetings. So the applicant's effort on this issue failed the task of moving his own spoken words on October 25th to the written words for you to vote on tonight. I'm here to alert you to this fact. The city wants to provide incentives of value to developers of affordable housing, and we can do better than this. Right now, at DCLT in Durham Habitat, we have brilliant executive leadership with proven track records who can guide us instead. Thank you.
My name is James Chavis, and I'm a longtime resident of Durham. I too must commend our mayor on the last month of those meetings we had. They were excellent, because we started doing something. We started accomplishing something on both sides, and that's why I'm here tonight to ask. Do not pass SCAD until that committee that was formed and anyone else that wants to come be allowed to continue what we started, because that meeting, as, as, two of them presided with the mayor being up there, having directed correctly, did not show favoritism on either side, that we needed that, a neutral person standing in the middle, making sure both sides had an opportunity to speak and be heard and get their points across. We accomplished something. But if you all vote for SCAD tonight, y'all have made everyone that was in those meetings a disservice to the citizens of Durham. Please, I'm asking every last one of you all, take in consideration, because those that came, we volunteer our time and our energy. No one said anybody there was in perfect shape to make anything, but you heard from everybody in there that wanted to be heard. And conclusion at the end came down, because our mayor made sure, before those meetings was closed, what would be our next step? And that's what we need to continue. And I asked her, and I'm asking her personally here, will she, if y'all vote this down, continue to be the person to be in charge? to be the person to be in charge and help us carry it out so that everybody, not one of us, the pro and the unpro, can sit down at the table and have a meal of determined to make this better for the city of Durham?
Next five speakers, Mr. Tom Miller, Regina Mays. There's a person that lives on Elmire Avenue with last four digits, phone number 8394. I just need for you to put your name in. You will be that person next after Ms. Mays, Larissa Orenskovich, Brian Callaway, in that Mr. Miller.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Tom Miller. I live at 1110 Virginia Avenue. What can I say about a 60-page set of complex legal changes to the UDO in three minutes that would materially add to your understanding of the issues it presents? And the answer to that is very little. And this is yet another problem, part of the problem, that arises when a profit-making industry is allowed to propose sweeping changes to rules that affect the lives of everybody in Durham. A public hearing is an important and necessary component of due process, the legal idea of fairness and public participation. But to be meaningful, the process has to be fashioned to fit the size and nature of the issue. With something as large as SCAD, how can any speaker address it meaningfully in so small amount of time? The proponents of SCAD win by asking for something so big that the public cannot address it in this forum. We're not talking about any of the minuscule parts of SCAD. We're speaking high and at 30,000 feet, and we're not accomplishing anything. There are really important details that we need to talk about, and we just can't do it in this forum. What does SCAD do? In a nutshell, it increases developer opportunities at the expense of the quality of life of ordinary people. And for the vast majority of people in Durham, their interest in planning and zoning is the protection of their homes. Their investment is not just the rent they pay or the value of their homes, it is the fact that they want a good place for their lives to happen, where their kids grow up and where they grow old. To the extent that our rules protect this interest, the rules are a success. When we tear those protections down, we fail the people. SCAD will strip away buffer requirements that protect people's homes. SCAD will accelerate gentrification and displacement by targeting naturally occurring affordable housing in low-wealth neighborhoods. SCAD will strip away infill rules designed to make new development compatible with Durham's existing neighborhoods. SCAD will allow new small houses and ADUs incentivized by the EHC changes to become much larger and more profitable, defeating their contribution to affordability. SCAD will allow residential properties to be substantially paved over, shrinking yard areas and eliminating paving limits. SCAD will allow as many as four or five houses on a flag, of flag lots, to share a single one-lane driveway. SCAD will increase byright development in multiple ways, excluding public participation in planning decision-making. An example is allowing residential development in commercial and industrial zones, especially in the area of town near Andrew Avenue, a place that should be rezoned, not deregulated.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. If you will finish your statement.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please vote against SCAD.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and all representing council members. My name is Regina Mays. I'm a 22-year resident of Durham, and I want to start out in a real quick way of saying, as the work began highlighted in March of 2019 with the Department of International Development and other supporting agencies for those with disabilities, to develop a paper on disability-inclusive infrastructure for low-income residents. It is projected by 2050 that 6.5 billion will be urban dwellers, and 15% will have at least one disability. They set out to name key enablers for infrastructure as part of a journey to leave no one behind. As I currently serve as the Chair for the Consumer Family Advocate Committee for Durham Chapter for Alliance Health, we are tasked this fiscal year to advocate and educate all stakeholders for housing, transportation, and crisis intervention for persons with disabilities. As I have taken part of multiple conversations, listening sessions, and research about SCAD, I revisited the current and currently changing of what is known as Section 811, which is the detailed policy that's for supportive housing for persons with disabilities. It also, it does not align with the current SCAD proposed. I also think and look at the minutes from the NPO meetings where there are, where there is a lack of detail for the realistic barriers for those disabled riders. So I challenge you as a council to not only think about the buildings and structures, but all that is included in infrastructure for people with, persons with disabilities. I recently read an article that a Chicago resident stated, sorry, go on to my other, that lots of property such as LITC leaves no room for exploitation for very low-income and elderly disabled people. Our only option is to use the housing authority that currently has a 25-year waiting list. So I, a lot of times in meetings, hear examples of other cities. In Chicago, I see named quite a bit. And if you follow those types of cities, you're going to get those type of results, a 25-year waiting list for their housing. So I thank you for listening. I hope you consider it is more than about buildings and structures.
Mr. Walter Jackson, Ms. Larissa, Larissa Orenskovich, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, and Mr. Brian Callaway, and that'll be the last three that we will take before we take our nine o'clock break. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of City Council. My name is Walter Jackson. I'm Chair of the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People, and I would like to add my voice to those of others thanking you, Mayor O'Neill, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Hoesley Hyman, for your service. I have worked in the public arena, and I know that it is a tremendous task that you take on, and I appreciate your service to the community. I am here this evening on behalf of the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People to renew our request that was made to you in July of this year to not consider SCAD before a new council is seated. My question to you is a simple one. What's the rush? What will happen if SCAD is not passed or acted on tonight? What will happen if it's not acted on until March of next year, or July of next year, or December of next year? That's the question I want to know the answer to, because it seems to me very obvious that the majority of our citizens, as you're hearing tonight, are not supporting this measure. I have heard some interesting arguments in favor of SCAD tonight, that if they are correct and true and accurate, may be reason to pass it. But the problem is, in my view, the community has not been convinced of the merits of this proposal. I think there are times when it is proper, appropriate, and acceptable for a governmental entity to act against the wishes of its citizens. I submit to you that tonight is not one of those occasions. I ask you to not act on SCAD this evening.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and respected members of the City Council. My name is Larissa Orenskovich. I have been a resident of Durham for 37 years, and I was alerted to the whole SCAD issue maybe six months ago by my neighborhood listserv. And I forgot to say where I live, 711 Arnett, Moorhead Hill neighborhood, and have been following it fairly closely. The thing that boggled my mind, of course, was the length of the document. I could not even imagine understanding it without the help of getting people who studied it in depth, like Mr. Tom Miller and Benelia Green, who met and parsed it out and then met again with the task force in October. To me, you have to look at the motive. It's called the Simplified Code for Affordable Development. As one speaker said before, it says "development, not affordable housing." Very, very important point. I have written to the City Council twice about SCAD, and I'm going to quote you a proverb that I included in my letter. "Though the forest was shrinking, the trees kept voting for the Axe, for the Axe was clever and had convinced the trees that because his handle was made of wood, he was one of them." Who is Mr. Anthony? I respect the gentleman. He's a developer, hard-working businessman. He's based in Raleigh. I read in The Independent, which was my first introduction to this whole issue, and pardon if I'm out of turn, that he has contributed to the likes of Madison Cawthorn and Marjorie Taylor Greene. Now, would I say he is one of us? No. I think Durham deserves better, and I have to agree with Mr. Jackson. There were a lot of interesting arguments that were made for the SCAD thing. Of course, I want walkability. Of course, I want infill development. Of course, I want to support local businesses. Of course, I want affordable housing. All of these are important. But don't jump into this. If there are elements of SCAD that the, now I hear that the unified, what do you call it, UDO is going to be revised, incorporate them. Cherry pick what you want. You don't have to swallow this lock, stack, and barrel. You don't. You can take your time. And the fact that there were three times as many people coming here to speak against SCAD should give you some pause for thought, because all the other people who spoke for it had some vested interest. And I just caution that take your time, consider the people, and decide what is fitting for our city and what is not. Thank you very much.
Mr. Callaway, you have three minutes, and you'll be the last speaker before we take a 10-minute recess.
All right. Thank you. My name's Brian Callaway at 307 Gresham Avenue in the heart of North Gate Park. The proponents that we've heard are clever. That's definitely true. They're also professionals. They're marketers. They, they raise, I believe, over $100,000, according to some of their websites, to push this agenda tonight to you, and for the last, what, year and a half? And, you know, they're polished. They brought forward their well-intentioned folks that they have on their team. But, you know, the speculative economics of their profession don't mean that intentions follow through. Like, the code that is in place is going to be manipulated and pushed to the brink by any developer that wants to come to town. And I will say, too, that the, you know, the claims and concerns from the community about the fears of gentrification, I think, are real, because the proponents are themselves the gentry. They are the land barons of this community. And they are the ones who just wrote this code to eliminate any guardrails that might be in place. And greed must have guardrails. And, you know, Councilmember, Councilmember Williams, you often challenge us, why are you, why are folks coming here and just saying, no, 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 bring solutions? So two solutions that we can do is, just as was just said, incorporate this in the broader rewrite of the UDO. That's an easy one. But number two, implement small-area planning. Let neighborhoods decide how to densify themselves, what kind of, what kind of development they want in place. But lastly, too, Councilmember Johnson, this being your last one, I wanted to make sure to address you as well on the way out. You know, the upside-down, I know, is inspired by Durham, and, you know, it is remarkable to me how, being a stated anti-capitalist, you so wholly have embraced, these last four years, the capitalists in the community. Yeah, I've seen you do it with Berkshire Hathaway in southeast Durham. We've completely transformed what that entire community looks like. You know, I've seen you lock arms with Warren Buffett himself. And so, you know, it is interesting, this is your last vote publicly to take, and you would be the deciding vote. So I am hopeful that you, that you maybe surprises tonight. So, thank you.
At this time, I'm going to give the lineup for the next five speakers when we come back in from recess. That will be Raphael Moses Mazier, Mimi Kessler, Katie Ross, Robin Barefoot, and Mary Malini. And I also have one card with the phone number on it with the last four digits, 9929. During the recess, if you could come and put your name on this card. We will come back at 9:50. Yep. I think about 11 minutes. 9929 would be the last digits. All right. With your name on it.
Figuring out what to do with fats, oils, and grease from cooking can be challenging. And with Thanksgiving right around the corner, we want to make sure you know about a free and easy way to dispose of it. The key is understanding that pouring fats, oils, or grease down the drain can lead to blocked pipes, household plumbing problems, and sewer overflows. While all of these can be expensive to deal with, overflows can also have potentially serious environmental health impacts. The easiest way to help prevent any of these issues is to keep grease out of your sink in the first place. To help you do that, our water management team offers free fat trappers for our residents. These containers are convenient and simple to use in your kitchen. They're basically airtight containers with foil-lined disposable bags. Cooking grease and oils are poured directly into the bags and then sealed to eliminate spills and odors. When the bag is full, simply throw it in the trash and put in a new bag. To get your free fat trapper, visit durhamc.gov/944.
The Durham City Council meetings and Planning Commission meetings are now available to livestream on all devices via the City of Durham's social media accounts. To watch, simply go to City of Durham NC on YouTube, Facebook, or Twitter. Devices include phones, tablets, laptops, desktops, streaming boxes and sticks, and smart TVs. The easiest way to view the livestream on smart TVs and streaming devices, such as the Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV, is via the YouTube app. Now you can follow along with the latest developments in the Durham community at dinner, your kids' game, the mall, in bed, during a breather, in the bathtub, and even on the International Space Station.
All right, everybody, if we could come back in. We're going to get started. We have quite a number of people still waiting to speak to us. All right, everybody, let's be seated and let's get started again, please. All right, we start with Mr. Mazer.
Mazer.
Mazer, yeah. Thank you. Followed by Ms. Kessler, Ms. Ross, Ms. Barefoot, and Ms. Malina. Here we go.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rafe Mazer with the Wall Town Community Association, and I'm here representing the community association, which, as I think many of you know, does not support SCAD. And one of the main reasons we don't support this is, we, as an organization and individually, have engaged extensively for more than a year. And you can have public participation and public input, but if you don't take any of the public input, what is that but window dressing? And I want you all to think about the consequences of this. And I want to speak to a provision I've mentioned before, which is the removal of many of the buffers. In particular, removing reasonable buffers between small residential and large-scale residential. And what you're going to see with this, because they're going to focus on where land is less expensive, a lot of the city's precious resource of lower-income homeowners, as we know those are really a rare thing, are going to be the neighborhoods where they will target. And I live in a community with a significant amount of older homeowners on fixed incomes in old homes. And I have seen the impact of infill, next to my house even, and how it impacts the foundations. And so, if you don't let these reasonable buffers exist and you let someone do a four- or five-story apartment building five, six, seven feet from the property line, the excavation they have to do will disrupt the soil, and you're going to cause damage. Today, I was with a neighbor, trying to figure out with her what to do about the shifting of her foundation with her little pension and her little social security and vetting contractors with her. These are people, you know? You can call them blight. I call them neighbors. And it just angers me that we are running this through, and they wouldn't listen to any of the reasonable suggestions. I want ADUs. I want denser. But I would like some minimal protection for some of our most vulnerable, lower-income homeowners in this community. And so that's why we oppose this. They did not listen, and honestly, some of them do not care. Thank you.
Ms. Kessler, followed by Ms. Ross, Ms. Barefoot, Ms. Malina.
Good evening. I'm back. It may be that I'm Mimi Kessler. I live in Durham, and my address is on record. It may be that the goals of this issue are the same among proponents and opponents. We just disagree on how to get there. I also think we don't know exactly what you're going to be voting on. There are -- so I counted 20 issues that come up in the SCAD document. The first item was discussed at the task force meeting for one hour, and there was no resolution. I would like to see the task force continue, and maybe that'll be a suggestion. These are not small changes. In some cases, they are extreme. One affordable housing idea in SCAD is to build residential units in industrial zones. I cannot imagine anyone who associates themselves with the word "progressive" would once again put people of low income, historically more people of color, in an area where their health and safety could be threatened and reinvigorate environmental racism. The PATH provision has rules for for-sale units and for rental units. The for-sale unit would only be required to be affordable for the very first sale. That does not help keep affordable housing stock available. Removing all parking requirements is unrealistic and extreme. People have to drive to most destinations in Durham today, because this is not New York City or San Francisco with reliable, expansive, public transportation. You can build a building and say that you want to have retail, but if you don't have some parking, that retail venture will fail. I owned a restaurant in Atlanta. It was entirely takeout. It was in a small shopping center, and there wasn't enough parking. Sorry, I have my eyes, I think, quite a lot. Please vote to turn this over to the planning policy experts in the planning department. We can all work with them to propose text amendments that should be implemented before the whole UDO rewrite. If you plan on amending what is written, I think that it is important that we isolate those things that you're amending and republish them so that we can all agree. And the other thing, last thing. During the recent campaign season, Councilmembers Williams and Caballero stated in multiple forums that they would not pass SCAD in its present form. Well, not a single word has been changed, as far as many of us know. The vote, I hope that you're -- I hope the people who voted for you voted well.
Hello, Katie Ross. I live in Bahama. I was also a member of the task force, and I thank the previous speaker who pointed out that the statement was clearly made, that the PATH provisions would be removed. And that was what we were told, and apparently afterwards, something happened doesn't engender trust. So, I'm going to read this, because, just to get the points made. "SCAD is being marketed as a remedy for Durham's housing crisis. However, there is no crisis that SCAD fixes. Home units in Durham have been and continue to be built at a rate far exceeding real need. In 2020, the planning department, with expert input, predicted that Durham needs 60,000 new units by 2050." So 30 years after that prediction. "An average of 20,000 new units should be built each decade to meet that goal. Since 2020, only three years, 20,000 new units have already been built, are being built, or have been approved by the planning department. The need for this entire decade has been met. Of course, the building is continuing at the very same high rate as it was. Any supply-side economic theory bringing down prices by increasing supply is already being tested in the real world, and there is no urgency to facilitate even faster development. Furthermore, there is now a glut of rental units in Durham. The attached report from Leen Associates, and I sent that to each of you, it's in Real Estate Services, shows that the current rental vacancy rate in Durham is 9.2%. That is three times greater than Dustin Ingleton of the Triangle Apartment Association testified at the deep dive in affordable housing is advisable. 3% is what's ideal, the ideal balance. And according to Leen Associates, 5,190 new apartment units are now under construction." So, again, if more rental units will make housing affordable in Durham, as some of you have said you believe, hey, problem solved. There's no need for SCAD. The facts? Instead of passing SCAD now, I would suggest that we sit down and, with part of the UDO, try to have developers pay for correction of the damage that's already been done to homeowners from blasting and to the damage to our waterways and to everything that Preserve Rural Durham has shown you through pictures and tours that you personally witnessed. Holding appropriate profitters responsible for blasting and other collateral damage of aggressive development may be accomplished by centralizing enforcement of permit requirements to the planning department. Homeowners should not have to deal with several different agencies and hire attorneys and experts to remedy the damage done by rampant development. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for your service these last two years. I have very little to add. I think the eloquence of the opponents tonight has been breathtaking. I want to add, I want to double down on what Mr. Chavis said, and I really do think that there was a lot of progress made in those discussions at the task force meeting. And I think a negotiated resolution to create ordinances that we can live with and accomplish our mutual goals, because there were certainly things I heard from the proponents that are very interesting and provocative. I want to suggest that those conversations continue with expertise in the room, and I understand that Cage Hours from Duke University and Dr. Spurlock from UNC were present, and I feel like that kind of assistance is necessary for the conversation to be fruitful. I'm not really sure that I can believe that the proponents of SCAD esteem Durham. I can remember when I first moved here 40 years ago, that people in Raleigh were afraid to come to Durham. That was a fact. I mean, it was a well-said fact. I think Durham is merely a tool for the exorbitant increase of their private equity and that they've got lots of folks behind them from Boca Raton and Atlanta and New Jersey and other places. And I think we can do better for Durham. I think there's a more beautiful Durham yet to be developed. I think it includes all kinds of these options, and I really think that tonight is not the night to pass SCAD. Let's keep talking about it, and I look forward to that conversation. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Mary Malina, opponent, live in Durham. And I have just a few points to remind us about how we got here. How a privately initiated text amendment put forth by a rich, white developer from Wake County is being handled by a majority-black council, many of whom purport to be progressives. What does the public know, need to know, about this applicant, Jim Anthony, and his colleagues? The information we have is sparse, but there are things that have come to light that bear repeating and bear scrutiny and should serve as a warning about what the lengthy text amendment could mean for Durham and for so many of our residents for whom there will be no benefits. We know that the applicant had included Habitat for Humanity as a co-applicant. We know that the applicant had included Habitat for Humanity as a co-applicant and has subsequently removed them from the application as of May 22, but we don't know why, how that came about. We know that neither the planning director nor anyone within the planning department ever verified Habitat's cosponsorship as is required by our UDO. Further, we know that the pre-application conference never took place, as is also required by our UDO. We know that Mr. Anthony has refused to identify the local practitioners he hired to write the text proposal, outside of naming Mr. Olsson, for whom he has admitted paying $30,000. We know that Mr. Anthony has stated in public meetings that gentrification is necessary to weed out crime and to push out the undesirable, the undesirable. And we know that in February, another of Mr. Anthony's colleagues, Erin Lubek, wrote, "I know the votes are on council. It's just a matter of us getting it there." And so now, it's there. Will the developers and the real estate investors be surprised by tonight's outcome? Will their investment of money and time spent lobbying pay off? Will we see what we have come to expect from council with one more four to three vote?
Good evening. I'm Lucia Constantine. I'm a resident of 1114 Gurley Street, which is less than a mile from here. My street has seen significant changes in the past five years. Thanks to the 2019 expanding housing choices, the precursor to SCAD, two 700-square-foot homes recently sold for nearly half a million dollars and have operated as Airbnbs since they were built two years ago. A duplex that had a Section 8 tenants was torn down by a SCAD proponent, Thomas Hennessy, and converted into six market-rate units that rent for $2,500 per month. And because of the current affordable housing density bonus, a developer intends to displace the remaining low-income tenants living in naturally occurring affordable rentals to build townhomes for sale. This is the kind of affordability and displacement that is widely produced under our existing zoning regulations and will only get worse if SCAD is approved. SCAD represents further deregulation of an already lax zoning code that serves mostly to line developers' pockets and boost land values at the expense of working-class residents and under-invested neighborhoods. It does nothing to improve the provision of affordable housing for those that need it the most. Instead, it undercuts the city's own public process for changing the UDO, the credibility of its own planning department, as well as federal and local requirements around affordability, which for Lytech developments is 30 years. And it sets a dangerous precedent for governance by allowing an industry to write its own rules. In the same way, we don't allow oil companies to write environmental regulations or banks to write financial regulations, we should not let developers write development regulations. I would hope that you all, as elected officials representing the public and the public good, would know that and would vote against SCAD. Thank you.
My name is Carlina Diannanen. I live at 1101 Carroll Street. I am the chair of the board for Durham Habitat. Over these weeks, over these months, you've heard a lot from Habitat. Before I go into that, I do want to say this, though, to council. Your job's not easy. It's not easy sitting here and listening to all these things. You have to balance the weight of your job with the city and then what the citizens want. So I just want to recognize that as I speak, and thank you all, most particular Mayor O'Neill. And you know where you are in my heart, you're my mentor. I'm also a criminal defense attorney by day. So back to SCAD. We oppose SCAD procedurally and substantively. Why procedurally? Because our name was never put on this without authorization. I am here to look all of you in the eyes. If you'll look at me in the eyes, we did not give permission for our name to be on that application. We did not. We did not. We were fooled into this, and it's important that you understand this. Our heart is broken because we did, we trusted these people. We trusted them, that they were doing the right things. When this came to our board, we were told we would have a seat at the table, that you, you honorable people wanted us to be at the table as it related to zoning. So we said, absolutely, city council wants us there, we will be there. Then we asked, what are some things that would be helpful to Habitat? We inquired. Four things came up. We said, as a board, we need more information, because if they're not good for the city, they're not good for Habitat. We didn't get that information. Lots of things went on. Things were never followed up on, and some of that might be our fault. But there's a saying, when you know better, you do better. And so in March, we did better. We investigated, and we took our name off of this, particularly because, and we sent the letter to each and every one of you, we did not want to put our name out there and to mislead any of you. We have a great reputation in this community for affordable housing. Now, our affordable housing goes along with, we also hold all our mortgages, so there are no interest on our mortgage. What we do is very different than what the PATH program is. And let's get to the PATH program. You all heard in January of 2023, someone from the proponents saying that the applicant wants five-year affordability. That person did not have the authority to speak on behalf of us. We never wrote the PATH program, and we are absolutely against the PATH program. I know only have three minutes to speak. I want to thank you again, and please, we are against SCAD. Vote no. Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Laws, Durham County resident. I too want to take the liberty to thank you, Mayor O'Neill, for an outstanding job representing Durham, specifically representing the people who don't come down here, who are hidden and who are among the least of those. You were our Esther. You are our Esther. I want to say to you, Deidreana, Councilwoman Freeman, I see you as our Vash Thai. Vash Thai didn't get to stay in the palace because she refused to dance and perform before the king and his crowd that was assembled at the party that night. Thank you for standing on your moral conviction and understanding the moral compass that you have is to do justice, to love mercy, and to always advocate for the least of those uncompromisingly. Well done. Yes, you have a hard job, but you campaigned for it, you asked for it, and we're expecting you to do the job that you were elected to do and to do it well without fear or favor. I have been somewhat triggered by some of the tropes that I've heard and seen. The good bamboozler's brew consists of using words like the poor, affordable housing, sprinkling in a few black folk, and talking about how you're what you stand to lose doing what's right. That's the bamboozler's brew. Don't do as James Weldon Johnson says to us in Lift Every Voice. Don't become drunk with the wine of the world and forget that your commitment should be to the least of those, to lift those up, and to not be bamboozled and hoodwinked. And if you believe that increasing more units will increase affordability, all you need to do is step out these doors and go five miles to the east, to the west, to the north, or to the south, and ask, has that happened under the current development plan? Let's not be hoodwinked. And you're right, those who acknowledge that development in real estate is not their professional expertise, it's not mine either. Healthcare, and particularly mental health and substance use are. But I will read from Peter Moskowitz's book, and I encourage you to read it, How to Kill a City: Gentrification, Inequality, and the Fight for the Neighborhood. Mr. Moskowitz says that gentrification happens under developers and real estate, realtors who understand the importance of moving capital to increase profit, period. The real estate industry is always looking for new markets in which it can revitalize its profit rate.
Thank you, Reverend Laws.
Gentrification does not mean that the suburbs are over or that cities are becoming more diverse. All it means is that our geography of inequality is being redrawn. Vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're here now, and these are the last three cards I have before we will turn to speakers on the internet, Ms. Angel Dozier, Attorney Sherri Rosenthal, and Ms. Dot Doyle. Those will be our last three speakers who are here in chambers with us.
I have to say, madam, as always, Mayor Elaine O'Neill, and join everyone else in just saying thank you for your service. We know, with a period on it. We know with a period on it, and the way that you step into the place with style and grace. Thank you. My name is Angel Isat Dozier. I am the founder of Be Connected Durham. I've been in Durham for 24 years. I live in the South Side neighborhood, a block away from the historic Hayti neighborhood. I'm here to state the obvious with regard to equitable community engagement and this issue surrounding SCAD. Yes, simplifying codes for affordable development and a collaborative, equitable community engagement process is essential, but it requires genuine commitment and understanding. This isn't an issue of simplifying the codes for affordable development. It isn't called that. Without meaningful follow-through and input from those directly affected, the risk of perpetuating harm to marginalized groups is significant. Surface-level comprehension of equity detached from the lived experiences of those who have been impacted by harmful development projects, especially black and brown people who historically do not have access to generational wealth, not because they have done something wrong, but because moving in a society as a marginalized person means that there's a whole set of experiences that go unacknowledged and without frame of reference. If the task force, which no longer exists, according to my understanding, is not empowered to authentically influence or speak on behalf of our communities and instead relegated to serving as a token task force, it can lead to decisions that inadequately address our neighbors' needs, those who have always been afterthoughts, further perpetuating disparities and excluding vital perspectives. For example, how do my neighbors know what SCAD is? If we're trying to survive the conditions spurred on by inequitable housing regulations and living conditions for generations? What effort has been put into people who do not have the privilege of graduate school as they wonder about owning or being able to afford a home, as the gentleman spoke about earlier? Even the examples of engagement practices that were led in 2003 and 2007 that we heard about, there were several neighbors throughout the Bragtown community who never heard about those engagement efforts. I would imagine that if we, if, I would imagine if those who are historically left behind are part of a process to determine how to simplify these codes for real, and also use their experiences, that we would be able to impact a much higher and much better change in Durham. Thank you.
This is Rosenthal and Ms. Doyle. Not trying to be rude, but I told you I was going to hold you three minutes. I'm going to start interrupting when the clock go off.
Hi, Sherri Zan Rosenthal, Wilson Street, here in beautiful Durham, North Carolina. I want to start by echoing what everybody said. I want to thank all of you for serving. It's a punishing job, it's a difficult job. Tempers sometimes get high, but my appreciation is very authentic for each of you. I have supplemental comments that I have submitted to the clerk, and you may want to take a look at those. I want to say that it's so frustrating that no logical examination of SCAD has any persuasive effect in shaking what would appear to be the determination to pass this thing. And I want to say that when there are some proponents of SCAD who talk about a walkable, bikeable city with neighborhoods that have, that are served by safe public transit and extensive public transit system and small local businesses, and a simplification of our code, I support all of those things. But having looked at and read the SCAD and considered it with colleagues who, like myself, have legal training, many of you know that I'm the former deputy city attorney, I will say that SCAD is so problematic in its substance. But I'm going to talk a little bit more tonight about the process and the due process problems because other people have spoken about some of the substance. I can't help but mention one thing. The provision that is supposed to be for small business says that it exempts from any kind of approvals and from many of the normal buffers and other side setbacks, anything for commercial that's up to 20,000 square feet. That sounds like a limitation. It's one of a number of things in SCAD that look like a limitation when you read it, but one of the things it does is say that you don't have any zoning approval, no development plan, no site plan. So on a plat, a survey plat, you could have a line, and there's no, you can butt that right up against the building next to it. And so a developer could have a literally infinite strip mall that would meet this provision. And 20,000 square feet itself is not small business because the average coffee shop or bakery is between 3,000 and 5,000 square feet. Most of them are about 3,500 square feet, if you look at industry standards. And so when we were, this summer, meeting with Jim Anthony and his team as the Inc. team, and I'm almost out of time already without having said most things, but I offered to write a genuine, small-business, intermixed residential-commercial ordinance that would be straightforward, and I offered it twice, and there was no interest or response from the opponents at all. And I think that this shows that this is not a straightforward or authentic concern of theirs. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Dot Doyle, and I live at 2311 Woodrow Street. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no to SCAD. In case you think I'm someone who always is in opposition to development in Durham, I'll remind you that I appeared here just last month in support of the rezoning of the Coke Building property on Hillsborough Road. And several years ago, I supported the rezoning of land along Hillendale Road that was brought to you by Mr. Anthony. In both those cases, there was real dialogue between the neighbors and the developer. There was a lot of back and forth. We wrote some sentences, they wrote some sentences. We eventually decided on some sentences that we could at least all agree on, well, live with. Sadly, despite the time that it has taken for this document to reach you tonight, I do not believe that there has been real engagement in which Durham citizens participated early in the process and had the opportunity to suggest to the applicant and to the city staff changes, as well as items that they might want to include. As an example, earlier this year, I attended two citizen engagement sessions with Mr. Anthony and a number of his colleagues at, I think it's called Vintage Church. It's a property that used to be a school, it's across from the Walt Ham Record Center on Club Boulevard. At least three-fourths of the time was spent with the developers reading through a PowerPoint of the amendment, and only a small amount of time engaging with attendees' questions and suggestions. I don't believe this is real engagement. Furthermore, the process is flawed because this amendment is large and unwieldy, is a large and unwieldy document that cherry-picks lines in the code, which is also a large and unwieldy document, making it difficult to consider the changes in the context of the entire UDO. The city has begun the process to rewrite the UDO, and noteworthy ideas in the amendment should wait and be incorporated in the new UDO. In the letter I sent to all members of council yesterday, I addressed a number of specific changes that contribute to my objections to your passing this amendment. I hope you had time to review those. I included concerns about the PATH component, and although I appreciate the fact that the, there's an increased commitment of time from five years to 15 And although I appreciate the fact that the, there's an increased commitment of time from five years to 15 years, I don't believe that's sufficient. A period of time less than 30 years means we will never catch up to the needs of Durham. I also outline specific concerns about the infill standards, especially as they relate to height setbacks, street yards. These are just two of the ideas I outlined. Because of my many concerns about both the content and the process surrounding SCAD, I ask that you vote no tonight. Thank you.
We will now turn to our speakers who have joined us online, and I will give you the lineup. We will hear first from Ms. Annie Duran, Damian Gu, Tom Campbell, Donna Stanback, Livonia Allison, Peter Crispell, Ken Pugh, and Aaron Kohli. If you have signed up and I did not call your name to speak, if you would raise your hand as we hear from Ms. Annie Duran. Ms. Duran?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. So I, first of all, want to thank everyone who came out tonight. There have been some absolutely eloquent, very well-informed speakers. I will not claim to be able to speak as eloquently as them. As many people have pointed out, this document is enormous and difficult to get through, which I believe has prevented a lot of people from participating in this process, which I find very problematic. However, in spite of the fact that I, and by the way, I live in Old North Durham, 910 Orient Street. And in spite of the fact that I am working and currently in school, I felt it was important to be here tonight to speak out in opposition of this document. According to the Triangle Apartment Association, who did a presentation for this very council, many of the apartment buildings in Durham right now are operating with an 8% vacancy rating and is anticipated to go up to a 10% vacancy rating, which is quite high, meaning that there is a lot of vacant housing, more housing built than we really even need. The problem is, it's not affordable or accessible. And I have not seen, in what I have been able to glean from this document, any kind of guarantee that any of the housing that will be built will be affordable to the people who currently live here. It seems that a lot of the housing that's currently being built is for people who may move here or are currently moving here and not the people who actually live here. There have been a number of other promises or assumptions made that I feel we don't have any guarantee of, you know, that this might be good environmentally. Well, a lot of exceptions have been made for developers, particularly those building on Lake Creek. So I don't have any particular assurance and don't see any assurance in this document that that will be protected. So I feel it is too soon for us to vote on this document, especially with a new city council coming in. I would propose that we wait and work on this. I know that there need to be changes made to how we develop in Durham. I don't think that this is it. I also want to point out, as many people have pointed out, that the majority of the proponents of this, of this document are developers or in real estate in some way. I recall reading a quote, I believe it was a quote from Councilmember Caballero, that we should be taking the advice of real estate developers because comparing them to teachers or doctors, you know, why wouldn't we take the opinion of a teacher?
Ms. Duran, if you would finish up your statement, your, the clock has gone off and I know you, I realize you may not be able to hear it, but if you would just finish your sentence, ma'am.
I was just gonna close out by saying that teachers and doctors do not make more money if their curriculum or the medicine works better. These real estate developers stand to make quite a bit of money if we pass this document. And I think that we should just keep that in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Gu, Damian Gu.
Madam Mayor, Damian Gu is here in person.
Hi, my name is Damian Gu.
You're here in person.
Yes, I'm, I'm here in person. I registered on Zoom, and I did not realize I was actually able to speak because I am not actually a resident of Durham. I am a resident of Raleigh. Some of you on the, some of you on the council and the community may have met me over the past months when I was volunteering for, to elect now council member-elect Nate Baker. Let's see. Sorry, I was really not expecting to be able to speak. So my, my script is way off. Yeah, I drove 42 minutes from Raleigh to speak here. Well, I didn't know I was able to speak, but because I wanted to give a voice to someone from Raleigh who was not, like, motivated by profits and motivated by people. Because some of you might wonder, like, why, why is this someone from Raleigh speaking here? Well, someone from Raleigh applied for SCAD. It's a, I'm talking about Jim Anthony. He's from Raleigh. Yeah, I was gonna mention the Habitat for Humanity, which always was always mentioned, that they pulled their support because their name was added without their permission. Yeah. You can tell I was really not prepared for this. Sorry. Yeah, I would, my recommendation would be to, um, either, I don't know if it's possible, but make a motion to table it indefinitely or please vote no. Thank you guys all for all you do. I'm really glad I'm not elected official, so I don't have to deal with that. So I, but I really appreciate you guys for doing that. And thank you for your time. SCAD is bad.
Mr. Tom Campbell? Mr. Campbell? Mr. Tom Campbell, if you can hear me, sir?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh. You would have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Tom Campbell. I'm a resident of Sprint Avenue here in Durham. And I've been a resident of Durham since 1970. I'd like to thank you all for your service on the council, and I have some understanding of what that is like as I was a member of the Durham City Council way back in, from 1981 to 1989. And most of the things I was going to talk about have been covered very well by, by previous speakers, so I'll try not to, to go over things too, again, too often. But one thing, I think that making the development process less expensive for the developers will not necessarily lead to less expensive development. And that it's indeed quite likely that it will just lead to more profits for the developers. And that, that, that has been spoken to as well already. And I think that taking the 17 articles in this amendment and looking at them as you go through the process of the, the new UDO in the coming year would be, looking at those issues in the context of the UDO would be the way to go forward. And some, there are some good ideas in this and some that, some that are quite suspect in my mind. The precedent, though, the thing that bothers me the most about this is the precedent of passing a complex ordinance like this that has originated from the group that the ordinance will regulate. Now, that just doesn't smell right. That doesn't seem like the way government should work. Government of the people, by the people, for the people. And it's especially bad if that, that's, that situation is made worse when that ordinance is passed by lame duck city council. That, that's, that just seems like there's, it seems like something Donald Trump would do. And that's not what we expect of the Durham City Council. Thank you.
Ms. Donna Stanback?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Uh-huh, you have three minutes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and council members. I'm Donna Stanback. I live, my address is on file. I'm a lifelong resident of 70 years in Durham and worked in Durham for all but six years. I am against this version of SCAD. I attended the SCAD neighborhood meetings for this amendment in 2022 at Club Boulevard. I couldn't understand then what they were trying to get at because it seemed that it was all over the place. And it was for small, but any developer could use it. And, and, but it was for affordability. But when I looked into the, you know, the affordability terms, they're, they're still quite pricey. You know, decreasing urban sprawl appears, appeals to me from a environmental view, but this amendment does not limit the usage as urban or in city. But most of the provisions could be applied by developers in the protected and critical watershed or even the, outside the urban growth boundary. The changes such as smaller borders, smaller yards, and increased impervious soil would be damaging to the watershed areas and are more applicable to urban areas. Will there be less notice to the citizens and citizen participation? From what I've read, that is the case. That is not good for Durham. I've attended many neighborhood meetings and little information was made available. I asked many questions and they said, it's too early, it's too early. And the replies and actions were not handled well. SCAD will make it easier for all developers, and it will not be limited to just the small scale, the way it is written now. So I oppose SCAD. Thank you for your time. And especially thank you, Mayor O'Neill and Dr. Holsey Hyman for your work this year.
Thank you. Dr. Livonia Allison?
Madam Mayor, Livonia is no longer in the queue unless she has one of the phone numbers here.
919-682-5219. You see that number? Okay. All right. All right. Peter Crispell? Crispell? C-R-I-S-P-E-L-L?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Mayor, City Council. My name is Pete Crispell. I live in Hayti. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a builder in Durham. As someone who has built many small housing units, a Durham native, and someone involved with trying to build a tiny house village on church property for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, I stand to gain from the proposed SCAD amendment and am personally invested in the outcome of this vote. I'm sure everyone's mind is already made up for how they will vote for this agenda item, but I appreciate the chance to stand before you and share some thoughts. I'd like to first applaud and congratulate the team of practitioners and community members who have come together to propose the SCAD amendment to the Durham UDO. I know they worked hard and put a lot of effort into compile this proposal and recommendations of best practices. I'd also like to applaud the city planning department for the work they put into the multi-year development of Durham's comprehensive planning process. I think the community engagement on this project has been a huge step forward for a city which prides itself on government of, by, and for the people of Durham. With a comprehensive plan in place for the city moving forward and a rewrite of the unified development ordinance scheduled for this coming year, passage of this amendment seems like it would undermine the capacity of the Durham, the city of Durham, to govern itself. With the preemption policies of the state legislature already limiting the capacity of North Carolina municipalities to govern themselves, passage of such a powerful text amendment to local development ordinances in the face of a comprehensive planning process feels like a self-imposed undermining of our elected officials' capacity to govern our fair city. I ask the council to allow our city government and planning department to proceed with the UDO rewrite armed with the research and best practices that have come out of this amendment proposal process, but not encumbered and bound by it. I ask you to vote no on this amendment. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Ken Pugh?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Madam, thank you. Madam Mayor and councilors, I'm Ken Pugh, a lifelong resident at 3503 West Cornwallis. A decision to adopt SCAD appears to be made with undue haste. First, the SCAD task force should complete their work. Second, I have great respect for the planning staff. I've worked with them in the past. In the analysis of SCAD, wherever this staff comment reads, "Staff recommend evaluating the effectiveness and impacts of this change as part of the UDO rewrite." I heard what the staff said, but what they're really saying is it requires more study. Don't implement a regulation until you've studied its effects and consequences. As proponents have said, I am strongly in favor of good urban design, promoting infill, helping small and local developers, and creating affordable housing. I'm strongly in favor of cohesive, non-conflicting, simple, and consistent regulations. However, if the purpose of SCAD is to promote infill within the city, it should only apply within the urban growth boundary. You just passed the new comprehensive plan that has that as a goal. However, almost every provision in SCAD applies to everywhere in the county. Let's be consistent. If the purpose of SCAD is to help small, local developers, then it should have a provision that it only applies to that group. There should be a geographic limitation, i.e., developers who live in Durham, and a size limitation, i.e., less than 15 units a year should be part of the ordinance. If the purpose of SCAD is to encourage affordable housing, then it should have a provision that it only applies to housing selling under a certain limit. For example, 70% of Durham average price or 70% of Durham average rental. If the proponents are really sincere about these goals, then they should have no issues with having these additional provisions. Even with the current regulatory environment, Durham has experienced massive growth, as you've already heard. So SCAD should be directed so it works specifically toward the goals of infill, small and local developers, and affordable housing. Or else what will happen is you will get the mega-developers messing up the entire county of Durham. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Aaron Kohli? K-O-H-L-I? Mr. Kohli, can you hear me? Is he still there? Is he unmuted?
He's unmuted, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kohli, you will have an opportunity to speak, sir.
If not, we can move on to Connor Hartman, who has their hand raised.
All right, we'll come back to you, Mr. Kohli, Mr. Connor Hartman. And if you would tell us whether you're speaking as a proponent or in, an opponent, sir.
Madam Mayor, I'm speaking as an opponent of the provision. And Madam Mayor and City Council members, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to this issue. And I know that you are the great stewards and representatives of our community and the public good in all that we are trying to accomplish. I, I have to say, the SCAD is one of the most concerning public policy approaches I've seen in our community. And I don't think any reasonable analysis would demonstrate how it advances the community and public interest. I think any balanced review of the facts would lead one to conclude that it negates many of the most important aspects of the country. of the comprehensive plan and the extensively debated UGB. You know, titling, naming of legislation and provisions in misleading ways has been an age-old approach in, in politics and one that I find to be deeply troubling. I think it's clear that the SCAD has limited application to affordable housing. And for those of us who really care about that in our community, I think we have an obligation to really scrutinize those provisions and ensure that what this is, this, this piece of development legislation and consideration is something that really advances what, what Durham is all about. You know, I gauged actively with my neighbors in the UGB and comprehensive plan process. And I find the SCAD to be especially concerning. We've had many thoughtful comments tonight from so many other residents. And I, I heard many proponents of the SCAD speak about issues that I think that we can all agree on that are, that are important. However, what they didn't state are all the other provisions in the SCAD that are deeply detrimental to the entire community. And I believe that the planning staff and the city council and the county commissioners and all of the residents of Durham and the wider Durham community really believe that we need to do something that is important, comprehensive, and treats all of Durham's citizens fairly and represents them in the growth of this community. And this SCAD does not do that. And I would propose to this, to this body, to the city council, that you please consider the right provisions within the UDO in the right process.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Your three minutes is up. Thank you so much. Our last speaker for this evening before we get to our rebuttal. And just to let you all know, it's almost like you have about 70 minutes of rebuttal. So we'll be calling you all up as you so desire to rebut what has been said by the opponents. We will look to Mr. Aaron Kohli as our last speaker opponent. Mr. Kohli? K-O-H-L-I.
Madam Mayor, he's not in the queue.
He's not there? All right. We will now turn back to the proponents for rebuttal. If there are any who have comments at this time, if you will come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan Jewell again. The, the proponents group asked me if I could say a few closing statements. I think it's, it's less of a rebuttal than it is a, an acknowledgement of, you know, what makes Durham the great community that it is? The fact that we have this kind of public discourse. You hear it almost every other Monday night, twice during the, twice, twice a month at various zoning meetings and things of that. You know, we are a community that speaks up. We are a community that shares our concerns. We are a people that want to know what's going on. And I'm proud to be part of that community. What I, I, I will say though, in all sincerity, is that this is, this has been my life for the last 40 years. And that is that the, the unknown or the un, unexpected is what scares people. And people who are worried about things want to speak up and say, I don't know enough. What does this really mean? What is this going to do to me? And we should go ahead and have more public discourse before this moves on. Well, this endeavor started in early 2021. This endeavor started when we first reached out to the planning department and asked them to take on this task of what you have before you tonight. The planning department, I think wisely decided that this was a really hot potato. They had just recently come off of expanding housing choices. And I think everybody was still a little bit shell-shocked, had war wounds, things of that nature. So the planning department, I think wisely chose to take some of the original proposal forward, put it together in one of the omnibus text amendments that was approved earlier this year. What I would like to say though, again, is I truly believe, and all of the proponents on this truly believe, that these are important to move Durham ahead with providing the additional housing that we need, that we desperately need right now, so that we don't become another Chapel Hill. And those of you who are familiar with Chapel Hill know that they continued to clamp down development regulations for years and years and years. And what they have ended up becoming is one of the most expensive communities in North Carolina to live in. We have an opportunity to do a little bit better. And that's why we're here before you this evening to say, let's move this forward. If there are things that don't work, the planning staff has already said, we can address those in the UDO, and we would look forward to doing that. But again, I'm proud to be here. I'm proud to be part of Durham. And you have a tough decision ahead of you, but thank you for all the time that you've put into this. Thank you.
That clock actually was not for you, Mr. Jewell, if you wanted. You had about a whole bunch of time for rebuttal, so I don't want you to be short. So you really didn't have a clock.
That's okay. I kind of brought it to a conclusion because I, 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 I had the, had the clock running out on me there.
It's really shouldn't be more right now.
I think that's the main point. You know, Chapel Hill made a huge mistake for many, many years and became the most expensive community in the triangle and maybe one of the most expensive communities in the state of North Carolina just because development regulations and timelines became more and more and more onerous. And I know folks are concerned about rising housing costs. They're concerned about displacement, things of that nature. But I sincerely believe, and I know all the proponent speakers surely believe, that the path forward to help with that is to make it easier to bring these small projects forward, make them a little bit faster, even remove some of the approval timelines. Again, I've been around for a long time. 30 years ago, a site plan approval took two or three weeks. Now it takes five or six months. And almost every new development ordinance change that's taken place over the last 10 years, other than expanding housing choices, even though well-intentioned, saving trees, removing, reducing the amount of grading, buffers, things of that nature, has, each one of those has made things incrementally more lengthy and more expensive to be able to build some housing, particularly on smaller-scale projects. And I will close by saying this, and I won't take 59 minutes and 30 seconds. I will close by saying this. I, I know there's a, a lot of discussion, and I can appreciate this, that why don't we just defer all this to the new UDO rewrite, which is just kicking off right now? And what I and what our group would say to this is, we need this now. And I have been involved in ordinance rewrites in Durham and other places. We are looking at at least three years from now before a new UDO is adopted because the, the great public discourse that you've been hearing tonight and for the last year and a half on this, multiply that times a factor of 10, and that's what will happen during the public hearings for the, for the UDO. And I say that because I have seen it before. So this is important now. There can be a course correction, as planning has already said. If some of these things that they, they've said maybe need to be tested a little later don't work out, we have time to adjust those. But we need housing now. We need a minor modicum amount of regulatory reform right now, and that's what this is. So thank you again for your time, and we look forward to good discussion among the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I did want to reiterate that you are speaking for, as in rebuttal for everybody. Is that correct? Mr. Jewell? All right. I will now, at this time, declare our public hearing to be closed, and the matter is back before the council. Before I open it up to our colleagues for further discussions, I do want to make a letter that was received by the city council today a part of the official record of this discussion. This letter is dated November 3, 2023. It is coming from Blue LLP Attorney, Attorneys at Law. It is addressed to the City Council, R T C 220001, Simplifying Codes for Affordable Development, SCAD. Dear City Council, our firm represents Habitat of Humanity of Durham, Habitat or H F H D. In light of the recent controversies concerning the proposed text amendments for simplifying codes for affordable development, we have been asked by Habitat to assist in an internal investigation of Habitat's internal systems and controls and how it interfaces with the city council. As made clear in Habitat's recent press releases, H F H D supports sensible changes to the UDO that align and promote our mission and, most importantly, the overall community good. The Board of Directors of H F H D, its CEO and staff do not support SCAD as it is currently written, will not apologize for actions related to SCAD, and will not reverse decisions made in March and April 2023 regarding SCAD. In light of the recent controversies concerning SCAD, Habitat is reviewing its internal systems and controls and how it interfaces with the city council. This letter is not taking any further positions on SCAD. Instead, Habitat is seeking information from the city about its process and procedures related to the application process and the particular application. We have learned much about this process during the investigative reporting of the Independent Weekly with limited comment from the city and city council. Specifically, Habitat is trying to better understand how it became associated with the application without signing the application, being informed of the application upon its submission, and why it cannot remove its name from the application. With that in mind, Habitat asks the following questions. Number one, is there a system or process in place with the planning department to verify the identities of applicants? Number two, who are the other applicants on this application? Number three, who represented Habitat at the pre-submitting meetings? Four, who paid the associated application fees to submit the request? Five, who represented Habitat at the neighborhood meetings? Six, did anyone at the City-County Planning Committee, JCPCC, hearings represent that Habitat was an applicant and/or author of SCAD? And if so, who was that person? Number seven, did anyone at the planning commission hearings represent that Habitat was an applicant and/or author of SCAD? And if so, who was that person? Number eight, why was Habitat not allowed to remove itself from the application? Habitat also requests the following information. Number one, all documents submitted by the applicants for this application. Number two, minutes and documents from any pre-submitting meetings held. Item three, copies of checks or proof of payment for the application fees. Number four, notices, minutes, presentation materials, and recordings, if any, for and from the neighborhood meetings held concerning the application. Number five, materials presented at the JCPCC meeting relating to SCAD. Number six, emails to and from the city and county, city and city council regarding Habitat and the SCAD application. Your attention is greatly appreciated, and your responses will help Habitat and its partners build homes, community, and hope. Sincerely, Blue LLP, Dan T. Blue III. And this was copied to our city manager, Wanda Page, Sarah Young, our planning director, Carlina Delanonan, Habitat for Humanity of Durham, and Tiana Jonah, Habitat for Humanity of Durham. Just wanted to put that as a part of our official record for this hearings. And now I will turn it over to my colleagues to my right for any questions they may have or any comments at this time. To my left, any questions or comments at this time? Councilwoman Jose Hyman.
So I have a question for the applicant.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Aaron Loubeck. He has a lot more technical knowledge of this than I do. So we'll, between us, we'll answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. My question is not so technical, but it is, I know when the first person was up there, he stated that in terms of housing economics, that the increasing supply of housing, apartments, lower rates and rent. And so I just want to know what evidence or research can you give me to back that?
We have at least 15 sources that we pulled together that show a correlation between an increase in housing supply leads to a decrease in overall housing costs.
Okay. Another question. What of our affordable? Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
One of the statements made earlier that I think is important to clarify is that there is, in fact, rising vacancy in downtown Durham. Because so many more units are being produced, that is where most of the construction of new apartments is taking place. And so what is happening is that excess supply is causing those landlords to do things that effectively lower their rent. They're giving away free rent, and they're doing what anyone rational does to try to fill empty units. There's a reason why those units are empty, and that's because they're the most expensive units in the market. What we're trying to do is open the door for small-scale development, duplexes, quads, ADUs with more bedrooms, to, in effect, create that small-market opportunity that is where people want to live, not in expensive downtown buildings.
Okay. My other question is, what of affordable housing have you been involved in or built?
Over the last two years, I've been involved with the development of a community that is going up right now on Carr Road. It's approximately 200 low-income housing tax credit units. I worked on that project for about five years before actually bringing it to fruition with Taft Mills Development. There's another project that Steve Toller and I have worked on with a group from Kentucky called LDG. It's going to be another approximately 200 units of Lytech low-income housing tax credit units. I have another approximately 500 units, which I'm in the process of working on right now, which will all be priced well below downtown Durham apartment rents.
You said downtown Durham?
I am not working in downtown. All my projects are in the suburbs.
Okay. And I guess what, one of the things that I've seen over my 18 months, almost two years, is that a lot of our developers here in Durham can't really afford to build here, right? And so I'd like to see more of that, that, that the developers here in Durham can have that, could be at the table. So I'm just curious to ask, you know, what is your interest in Durham if you don't even live in Durham?
That is a wonderful question. I went to Duke University and graduated in 1976. I've had a soft place in my heart since running on the track at Duke with NC Central athletes who I adored because they had just come back from Mexico City in 1972. I am, I have been connected to the city for a very long time, probably longer than many of the people in this room. Been developing here for 30 years. And I've been honored to be part of this community. And I actually do wake up in the morning thinking about, how can I be part of the solution to this housing crisis that is very real? That's what motivates me to be part of this project.
And you might have answered this, but do you also have projects in Raleigh?
Yes, I work in multiple states, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee.
And so my last question is, you know, and again, you gave us some of this, but in your real opinion, do you feel that this SCAD amendment would really help all levels of economic development? I mean, lower, middle-class, high? Do you really feel that, in your honest opinion?
I do feel that there is one level that it's not going to help. And those are the large-scale developers who are the ones who dominate the landscape in Durham today, because they're the only ones who can afford to get through the development process. We're trying to make it possible for the little guys and gals to make deals happen here, whether it's in their backyard or whether it's in a small assemblage of lots. That is the focus of this text amendment.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Just more so a point of order or process. Are we going to be able to discuss how we're going to move forward on this tonight? And I'm just going to suggest that there is not, everything, I think everyone in this room does not prefer us past this as is. And I hope that we can get to the point of being able to discuss those points. I would love to hear, you know, from my colleagues, you know, there's something that you want to pull out to actually discuss, and we look at the rest that's non-controversial, and we just kind of move forward with that. If not, I would think we're going to be here till about 4:00 a.m.
No, we don't want to be here that long, Councilwoman Williams. I promise you, we won't be here that long, but I can kind of speak to that. You know, I wanted to also give you and Councilwoman Freeman the opportunity to kind of catch up, catch focal on your views of the task force. And just since I have the mic right now, one of the suggestions that I would hope we would consider is what we started, and that is finishing that process. I have not heard a good reason why we shouldn't move ahead, other than we heard during the task force that there were some developments that were already in place or moving if this passes. And I've also heard that there's some sense of urgency on behalf of some of the proponents. I don't, I have not seen that urgency in that you're changing the landscape for an entire city. And so in that vein, it is uncommon upon us, I think, to take the time, as we've started a process, to allow that to its completion, whatever it is. It's nothing new for us to have a task force. I've chaired them for the city, normally run about 18 months, and you have some more community input. With something this expansive and this unusual, I don't see what the urgency is in not allowing that process to continue. It was very informative. I think people got something out of it and was beginning to kind of gel on, let's see how we can move it together. I do think it is an opportunity, as explained to us by our experts, where we can look at this as a national model, where you actually sit down and you figure out how to make it work from Durham. If your emails are like mine, it has been probably 250 to 300 to 400 folks who have written over the last 48 hours saying, no. And so when you have that kind of, and this issue, since I've been on the council, has been the most controversial. And people are expecting that this is going to be a 4-3 vote if we vote on it tonight. I've heard that over and over again, you've heard that stated, and I think it behooves us to stop and this council really listen to folk and give them an opportunity to participate in this process. So I'm for a task force and not voting on this. And if I have to vote, I'm going to tell you right off, my vote is no.
Councilwoman Freeman, I think we can kind of address the task force. I too am interested in continuing a task force. However, there's been over 200 meetings on this document. There have been a lot of engagement. I think there can be more, because I think this can evolve into a housing plan. But I, for me, it's about fidelity to the process as well. And what we're talking about here is, you know, it's not like someone illegally submitted this to the city. Now, I'll be the first to say, and I've said this before, I look forward to proposing a policy to where no one can adjust or modify the U D O at this size at one time. Now, that would be the preference of the council, and that is to come. I think that we've learned our lesson, you know, but this has been a legal process. We may not like it, and many may not agree with it, but we, that is what happened. You know, this is a privately initiated and submitted amendment to the U D O, and we can't treat it as if it's illegal if it's legally on the books. And if we don't acknowledge that, then therefore we expose ourselves on the other side. So for me, this commentary, this statement that I'm making right now is not for or against this policy. It's more so acknowledging that there is a legal process that was followed, and that is very important. I don't know how I'm voting just yet, because we haven't been able to discuss it. In regards to the task force, I think that we should have a task force that can actually work with folks in the industry, private residents and citizens, on what a housing plan actually could look like. And I think that would be a great, you know, way to engage. But to say that there hasn't been any engagement, that's just not true. You know, and it's been a lot about personalities, and it's been a lot about characters, it's been a lot about individuals, it's been a lot about the applicant, a lot of it I actually agree, I agree with. You know, but when you're in this city, you have to make an objective decision. When, and you do have to, and part of that objectivity is looking at how it affects the community at large. You know, so I look forward to hearing a bit more discussion from my colleagues. In regards of the task force, I, something that was omitted, that was stated a lot tonight about the applicant pulling out PATH. I did make sure that I stated that the task force was there to provide recommendations, not make final decisions. I made that very clear. And therefore, we have the task force to make recommendations. So it would be disingenuous to expect that a final decision came out of the task force that the council is going to actually follow tonight. So I, one of the recommendations in the task force was to remove the PATH program. That would be amongst us to discuss. And whatever the fate of the council will be, that will be it. But there were some, and I don't have it in front of me, but there were some matters that were discussed that were pulled out in the task force meeting. I don't, Councilmember Freeman, I don't know if you remember what they are. It was like seven items, eight items, but everything else, I believe, it was not as controversial.
Mayor Protem, but I do, before you start, is to give her a chance to, since she was co-chair, the committed to offer her comments.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Williams pointing to the conversations we did have. I will say that engagement is not just meetings, and it's been a struggle to just kind of stay objective in this process, noting that there's a lot of inequities already built in. And so I know that the 200-plus meetings for this document means a lot of time, but it's a lot of wasted time if it doesn't yield what we need as a city. And I'm very clear that I do agree that the fidelity of the process has to match our needs, and that we have to come to some type of agreement around what needs to move forward, because it is not, it's not feasible to just say that we don't need some changes to our code so that we can simplify it for developers. I don't think that this is the process, I don't think that this is the text amendments, but I do think that there is a way that we get there, and I'm confident that we will, regardless of what happens tonight, because I know that the people in this city are not going to stand for just being snow-rolled or hoodwinked by some man out of Raleigh. I think that we had a very good chance to have the conversations and to get started based on the eight items that were brought forward and context, you know, whether it was around parking, or buffers, or a different variety of things. The conversation did not touch on people with disabilities, or, you know, just kind of like ADA needs. But I do, I do know and understand that the building code does touch on that. And so I am aware that this, there needs to be a lot more awareness of what is involved in the code and what is involved already. I am pushing back a lot on the fact or the comments around how we need to remove these regulations as if that's the hindrance I offered, or I made the request, that we actually look at some of the projects, because we could pilot some of the amendments in action so that we could actually see it real time. And that offer was not taken up, I will say, and I haven't heard anything regarding that, which leaves me to believe that there's a lot more going on behind the scenes, and it doesn't, it doesn't really create a very transparent public process in the way in which I had hoped this would go. I will say that in the conversations we had at JCCPC when Habitat was presented, that was a real big driver, and it says a lot when your housing advocates are against, your affordable housing advocates are against moving forward as well. And that doesn't mean that they won't, they wouldn't want changes to the code, it just means that this is not it. And so I'm really trying to understand why the applicant has not withdrawn this, as opposed to pushing it forward, noting that we could actually continue with the conversation. Yeah, that, this is, we're in this position because the applicant put us in this position. And it is not lost on me that there's been a lot of harm created in our community, whether by words or by actions, and the people who are going to wear this are not the people who are applying, and not the people who are going to benefit by profiting off of development. I, I, I wholeheartedly trust the process, and whatever we do tonight is what we do. But just know that I will continue to keep pressing on making sure that we figure out what affordable housing looks like for the people who actually need it, because it's not five units, one here, there. It's actually thousands, and those units actually need to be permanently affordable. And that's not what we're talking about, and I'm not invested in this at all. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you all members of the community that have come out to speak to us. Two very quick opening points. I think that the work that the staff has done to identify the text amendments, that there already is large-wide support around. I'm prepared to move on tonight and bracket out those things that are more controversial, namely, sizes of auxiliary units and the other things, and that list has been well circulated. So I'm prepared to do that tonight. Secondly, I do want to, just for point of clarification, I actually sat in her honor's place the first meeting of the task force, and it was made explicitly clear that the task force meetings were not designed to proffer or to accept. At that point, it was a discussion. If we're going to modify that mission moving forward, then we can certainly do that, but noting tonight that things that were represented at the task force have not shown up in documents tonight, that is by design, because the task force was fire-walled to be a discussion group, not a place where deals were made or things were cut, because that's what's supposed to happen before this body. That's what's supposed to happen before tonight. Colleagues, this is my first time speaking publicly about SCAD, and I've been waiting for this moment for a long time, because there's been a lot, just a lot of stuff about this text amendment that just, for those of us that read the document, I imagine some of us scratching our heads and saying, where did some of this come from? I've been voting on text amendments for six years, almost seven years, and these are text amendments, and there's been an approach that, that there's been an approach that I've been taking, and a friend in the medical profession actually shared something with me. He said that folk get in trouble when they deviate from standard care, and that sometimes rich and powerful people want to try and get different outcomes through their money or through their influence by trying to get you to experiment with stuff, when really, human physiology, it doesn't matter how much you make, whether you're black or white, there are some things you just treat a certain way, no matter how much money you make. And that's how I've approached this. SCAD has become so exotic, when they're really text amendments. And the notion that we are going to somehow give away all of our power, that we can't take it back, is not the case. We can review and we can amend at any time. It wasn't the case with expanded housing choices. We didn't give away all of our power. State won't let us do that, actually. I do also want to say that the urban growth boundary, and I heard folk allude to that tonight, is part of our comprehensive plan, which does not have the force of law. The urban growth boundary is aspirational. This ordinance has the force of law, and why do I say that? We have to make a choice, Durham. We have to make a choice what our city is going to look like. And I've heard other cities mentioned tonight. If you go to other cities that are larger than ours, you're going to see cities where you have stores with apartments above them. You're going to see places where you have big buildings next to small buildings. That's what we have to decide where we're going. And if we're going to keep faith with an urban growth boundary, that by definition means we're going to get closer and we're going to get higher. And if you get closer and higher, by definition, you cannot have the same buffers. That's what all of the great metropolises around our country look like. I ride the bus. So we need to get more transportation. But we can either stop growing out and grow in, or we can stop growing in and grow out. Now, listen, I have no shame to admit that I don't know how to do both. I don't. Which is why you've elected us to make choices and to make these decisions, but if we are going to stay closer and not get out to our friends in the county, then we have to understand that we're going to start looking like and sounding like and feeling like other urban centers around our country. And SCAD is what it looks like. Now, as far as big developers, I, you know, exploiting the system, when we had help sent out for ARPA, there were employers who lied about the number of employees that they had, and used the money to buy Ferraris and take vacations. And there were other folk who used the money to sustain their businesses and take care of their families. There will always be people who will seek to exploit holes, loopholes. If we're waiting for the moment when we can say we can guarantee that this isn't going to happen, when have we ever voted on anything with that type of guarantee? There will be people who will seek to exploit, and there will be people who will do the right thing. My concern, and does anybody really think that big-time developers are having problems now, doing what they want in Durham? Most of the time when we vote, 100% of the time when we vote on something, we are voting to block what can go there. And I wish we were as powerful as people think we are. Most of the time when we vote on a development, there's already a zoning there. So something can be built and will be built. So when we say no to one thing, it's yes to something else. There's no such thing as just a static no. Something is going to go there. And oftentimes, what we as a council have to reckon with is, is the thing that's going to go there worse than what we're putting there. And my final point is, I want to welcome all of the folk who have found religion about what's been going on in legacy black neighborhoods for 30 years, for 30 to 40 years. There are three to four neighborhoods in this city that look exactly the same way they looked in the 50s. Three to four that have not felt the impact of developments and growth. They have listservs, they have powerful people that live in them, they have wealthy people that live in them, and I'm amazed at the number of people that have picked up on talking points from some of these of these folk and have started to do the bidding of some of these folk. SCAD, and part of the problem is not what SCAD's gonna do to black neighborhoods that have already been catching it. Part of the concern is what SCAD is going to allow to happen in neighborhoods that have not changed. Watch that. And long after I'm gone from this seat, you remember this night and you remember these words. And now we have these folk that are bleeding, their hearts are bleeding, about the help we've been catching in neighborhoods that have been gentrified and targeted for 40 years. And now this is a concern. So I would just caution some of my friends to watch where you're getting some of your talking points from, and watch what you're parroting, and look at the bigger picture of what parts of our city still look the same. And how does that happen? Why is that? Every area, every neighborhood in Durham, including my neighborhood, is being impacted and will be impacted by growth. You know, when I came, and this is my first time speaking on SCAD publicly, I really, really wanna listen to the staff, because they've done a lot of work. They've done a lot of work. And finally, we weren't a lame duck council when this SCAD came to us. We've become a lame duck council since SCAD has been before us, because we've been dealing with it for a long time. And I heard somebody mention Donald Trump tactic earlier. A Donald Trump tactic is not letting you make Supreme Court appointments or do your job when you've still got time on the clock. When this first came to us, there was plenty of time on the clock for us to do our job. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'll yield back. I recommend going with the staff has recommended, pulling out those controversial parts, going with more task force stuff. But there are some things in here that are going to make it into the UDO rewrite. We already know that some of the things in this document are going to be part of the UDO rewrite. I think we should move on those things. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other comments? Okay. Councilwoman Caballero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanna know what the eight items are. Because I know what it is in the staff analysis, but that's only about four. So I would just like to know what the eight items are.
What I was going to do is I've talked with Councilwoman Friedman and Councilwoman Williams, and they have those items, and then we can, they will discuss those, and then we can figure out whether you wanna pull those out, leave those in, or just how you all want to proceed in that matter. I did not give them time to talk to each other. So I am gonna ask, if you don't mind, Dawn, can I ask you to change seats with Councilwoman Friedman and put her down here so that they can kinda talk for a second?
Madam Mayor, should we take a break and let them talk?
I'm sorry?
Should we take like a 10-minute break?
If y'all got time, thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm just, it's just a suggestion.
Five minutes. I don't wanna put them on the spot, but I do want them to direct this conversation since they will be here, you know, after I leave. And so if y'all will give us a five-minute break, that would be so helpful, and then they can talk.
Thank you.
Then you don't have to move, Dawn.[806.63]
All right, everybody, we're going to come back to order. We've had some lengthy discussions. Sorry it took a little bit longer than five minutes, but as you know, this is what democracy looks like in the people's business. I think where we are now, and I'm going to let our two co-chairs talk about it, but I'm going to ask for a vote on these items as it stands. There are eight different items that I think folk have agreed with our planning department that are problematic and can be pulled out, but it's almost impossible to do that at 11 o'clock. We can attempt that without some discussions. The city planning is saying with those items even pulled out, they need an opportunity to be able to make sure that they are pulling all of the relevant pieces that go with that item. For instance, buffers, you have to pull all of that out, and there are some other categories that may overlap. So, we can have discussions. I'll let the two co-chairs speak first, and then we'll call for a vote.
So, I would just let staff know directly the eight areas of concerns that were raised, or the eight areas that were under discussion at the task force. Were the affordable housing path program, the geometries and buffers, the small lots and flag lots, the accessory dwelling unit ADUs, parking, neighborhood commercial zones, town homes, and non-conformities.
Could you repeat those one more time, a little bit slower, so we can type?
The affordable path. I can share it by email as well. I'm not going to try to make you type it, write it all down. But I think those eight areas, outside of what you've already stated, could move forward. I think we could have, at this late hour, if we could go back to the drawing board and just come up with an ordinance that addresses the ones that you wanted to move forward without the items that were of concern for the task force. I think we can move that forward, but tonight, I don't think it is possible. So, Councilwoman Williams?
It took a while. We are still in deliberation about this. There are, I believe where we are right now is, staff made recommendations. Even some of those recommendations, we do take some issue with some folks. The reason why I ask for each council member to, if you have a concern, pull it out, so we can actually discuss those. We have not come to a consensus on it, but we, staff is open to sort of taking what issues there are that we have, and then, you know, making a recommendation on those. This is reflective of some of the topics that came up in the actual task force. Where I stand on it is, I think that we do need to take some action tonight. The public hearing has been closed, so we have to. If not, we would have to open it back up and then continue it, with giving staff time to bring back a version of the amendment in an expedited fashion. Or, you know, we could vote it up or down as-is tonight, which has its own issues. Once we vote it down, it's gone. We will have to ask staff to bring something back. If we vote it up as-is, then we take all the issues that come with that, which is why everyone is in this room tonight. So, I'd love for us to be able to pull those items out that there is issue with here on the council, and we pass whatever else is left that staff recommended, which is majority of the document. We have not come to a consensus of where we are in that. So...
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that there is a way to move forward with a significant piece of this document, because we do have a really comprehensive and well-thought-out staff recommendation. There is one thing I want to clarify about that recommendation, though, with staff, about the question that I asked earlier, which was whether y'all intended for all of the items that you recommend evaluating as part of the UDO rewrite to be deferred. One of the folks who's been working on SCAD told me that that was not their impression from previous meetings and conversations, that what they thought that language meant was that we should move forward with it and evaluate it, that we should pass it now and evaluate it later. You said we should wait to pass it. So, I just wanted to clarify, because they felt like that was new information.
Yeah, Bode Brinsky Planning. The language where we're recommending, a lot of the examples, I think there's five or six instances where we use that language. And I'll just use an example, ADUs for places of worship, right? That's something that we're pretty sure and pretty confident that moving forward, we would be in favor of a version of that. And when it talks about site plan exemptions, that's process-related, and so I think we're recommending that idea, and we're fine with moving forward with it, but we recognize that we would take a look at it as a part of the UDO rewrite.
Okay, but you would...
Which is the second, the latter thing you said.
Right. So, but is your recommendation that we move it forward tonight, or that we don't move it forward tonight?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, which?
To move it forward.
Move it forward tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Okay. Oh, my God. We're never getting out of here. So, to clarify, you are recommending that, you know, for example, in item, under topic one, site plan exemptions, the affected UDO paragraph 3.7.2B, where it says, "Staff recommend evaluating the effectiveness and impact of this change as part of the UDO rewrite." You, that is a recommendation to pass that provision as part of this package?
That's correct.
Okay. Sarah's coming up behind you.
So, Sarah Young with the planning department. I think we need to, like, carefully read how these are written. So, for instance, that one, it was, which one was it? It was this one, right?
Yeah, the first one I saw with that language.
Yeah. There are some of these, it says, "Staff recommends the change. However, we also recommend to reevaluate it." There are some where it says, it doesn't necessarily say at the very beginning, "We blanket recommend," so I think that's kind of the subtle distinction that if it doesn't say, "We blanket," kind of recommend, but we recommend that if this were to be passed, like, it does, it is something that we would revisit absolutely. So, and I'm sorry if that's kind of cryptic. This was quite a challenge to put into words what our concerns might be. But if you have specific questions on any of them, I'm happy to clarify further.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Let me look up some more specific questions. So, okay, for example, one of the provisions in SCAD would allow residential development in the aisle district. And y'all say that you recommend evaluating the effectiveness and impact of allowing residential on small aisle lots as part of the UDO rewrite. That is not a recommendation that we pass it tonight.
Correct.
Gotcha. So, if you preface that with a, "We recommend this change," then it's, "Do it now."
Right. So, we tried to be clear, the things that we were recommending, it'll start very clearly with, "Staff recommends this change," or this clarification.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That is super helpful. I think that, I think where I am on this now is in line with where the mayor pro tem was earlier in the evening, which is to pass the changes that are recommended by our staff tonight, with the, with, I believe, the exception of the affordable path. I think we should pull that out. I think it needs more work. And there are a couple of things in there that the staff recommend, but I believe that whole piece needs more analysis and that. So, that's all of section, that's all of topic six, if folks are looking at attachment M, which is the staff analysis. Everything else that's recommended by staff, I'm in support of moving forward with tonight, and pushing the path, as well as the additional items that aren't recommended for approval by staff at this time, to, for future consideration with the UDO rewrite. I've been advised by our attorney that that is, that that is possible, as long as the motion is made in a way that makes it very clear which pieces of the proposal we are accepting and which we are deferring. And I think the conversation just now with staff clarified which, which pieces they are recommending that we move forward with now, and which pieces they are recommending that we wait to evaluate as part of the UDO. So, that is what I would support. That's what I think would be the best path moving forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cobby Evar?
Thank you. That's fine. I think we're just going to have to literally go one by one, which is going to be really long, because embedded in each section, so if I'm looking at the staff, the staff, which I agree with what you're saying, right? I think everyone on this dais understands that there's components that none of us feel comfortable passing tonight, and then there's components that I know I feel comfortable passing. You know, the entire section on row houses, that, like, there's nothing controversial in there. So, topic two, everything under there, creation of new detached row house housing type, I haven't heard a single person complain about it. I don't understand how it would be controversial. I don't understand how we wouldn't pass that tonight. But does that mean we're going to have to go, I make a motion to pass 4.6, 5D.2, and we're going to have to go through each one, because there's no way we're going to be able to pass, like, even in the section by topic, there's ones where it's like, yes, staff recommends, but then maybe one right underneath that says, basically, no, we don't recommend?
What I was told by our attorney is no. We do not have to go item by item. We can say, we could say, for example, "I moved to pass all of the items in the SCAD proposal that are recommended by the planning staff," and that that would be an acceptable motion, and we could vote on that. Don can correct me if I'm wrong.
I think the one thing I would add to that, just looking at the language in the staff analysis and recommendation, is I would think that the motion needs to say something like, "That column needs to include the language, the specific language. Staff recommend this change."
of the document. We have not come to a consensus of where we are in that, so.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that there is a way to move forward with a significant piece of this document because we do have a really comprehensive and well-thought-out staff recommendation. There is one thing I want to clarify about that recommendation, though, with staff, about the question that I asked earlier, which was whether y'all intended for all of the, all of the items that you recommend evaluating as part of the UDO rewrite to be deferred. One of the folks who's been working on SCAD told me that that was not their impression from previous meetings and conversations, that, that, that what they thought that language meant was that we should move forward with it and evaluate it, that we should pass it now and evaluate it later. You said we should wait to pass it. So I just wanted to clarify because they, they felt like that was new information.
Yeah, Bo DeBrensky planning. The, the language where we're recommending, a lot of the examples, the, I think there's five or six instances where we use that language. And I'll just use an example, ADUs for places of worship, right? That's something that we're pretty sure and pretty confident that moving forward, we would be in favor of a version of that. And when it talks about site plan exemptions, that's process-related. And so I think we're recommending that idea and we're fine with moving forward with it, but we recognize that we would, we would take a look at it as a part of the UDO rewrite.
Okay, but you would-
Which is the second, the latter thing you said.
Right. So, so, but is your recommendation that we move it forward tonight or that we don't move it forward tonight?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, which one?
To, to, to move it forward.
Move it forward tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Oh my God. We're never getting out of here. So, so the, to clarify, you are recommending that, you know, for example, in item, the, under topic one, site plan exemptions, the affected UDO paragraph 3.7.2B, where it says, "Staff recommend evaluating the effectiveness and impact of this change as part of the UDO rewrite." You would, you, that is a recommendation to pass that provision as part of this package?
That's correct.
Okay. Sarah's coming up behind you.
So, Sarah Young with the Planning Department. I think we need to like carefully read how these are written. So, for instance, that one, it was, which one was it? It was this one, right?
Yeah, the first one I saw with that language.
Yeah. There are some of these that says, "Staff recommends the change, however, we also recommend to reevaluate it." There are some where it says, it doesn't necessarily say at the very beginning, "We blanket recommend." So I think that's kind of the subtle distinction-
Okay.
-that if it doesn't say, "We blanket kind of recommend," but we recommend that if this were to be passed, like it does, it is something that we would revisit absolutely. So, and I'm sorry if that's kind of cryptic. This was quite a challenge to put into words what our concerns might be, but if you have specific questions on any of them, I'm happy to clarify further.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Let me look up some more specific questions. So... So, okay, for example, one of the provisions in SCAD would allow residential development in the aisle district. And y'all say that you recommend evaluating the effectiveness and impact of allowing residential on small aisle lots as part of the UDO rewrite. That is not a recommendation that we pass it tonight.
Correct.
Gotcha. So if you, if you preface that with a "we recommend this change," then it's do it now?
Right. So we tried to be clear, the things that we were recommending, it'll start very clearly with, "Staff recommends this change," or this clarification.
Okay. Great, thank you. That is super helpful. I think that, I think where I am on this now is in line with where the Mayor Pro Tem was earlier in the evening, which is to pass the changes that are recommended by our staff tonight with the, with, I believe, the exception of the Affordable Path. I think we should pull that out. I think it needs more work. And there are a couple of things in there that the staff recommend, but I believe that whole piece needs, needs more analysis and that. So that's all of section, that's all of topic six, if folks are looking at attachment M, which is the staff analysis. Everything else that's recommended by staff, I'm in support of moving forward with tonight and pushing the path as well as the additional items that aren't recommended for approval by staff at this time to, for future consideration with the UDO rewrite. I've been advised by our attorney that that is, that that is possible as long as the motion is made in a way that makes it very clear which pieces of the proposal we are accepting and which we are deferring. And I think the conversation just now with staff clarified which, which pieces they are recommending that we move forward with now and which pieces they are recommending that we wait to evaluate as part of the UDO. So that is what I would support. That's what I think would be the best path moving forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Caballero?
Thank you. That's fine. I think we're just going to have to literally go one by one, which is going to be really long because embedded in each section, so if I'm looking at the staff, the staff, which I agree with what you're saying, right? I think everyone on this dais understands that there's components that none of us feel comfortable passing tonight, and then there's components that I know I feel comfortable passing. You know, any, the entire section on row houses, that like, there's nothing controversial in there. So, topic two, every single, everything under there, creation of new detached row house housing type, I haven't heard a single person complain about it. I don't understand how it would be controversial and I don't understand how we wouldn't pass that tonight. But does that mean we're going to have to go, I make a motion to pass 4.6, 5D.2, and we're going to have to go through each one because there's no way we're going to be able to pass, like even in the section by topic, there's ones where it's like, yes, staff recommends, but then maybe one right underneath that says, no, basically, no, we don't recommend.
What, what, what I was told by our attorney is no. We do not have to go item by item. We can say, we could say, for example, I moved to pass all of the items in the SCAD proposal that are recommended by the, by the planning staff and that that would be an acceptable motion and we could vote on that. Don can correct me if I'm wrong.
And I think the one thing I would add to that, just looking at the language in the staff analysis and recommendation is, I would think that the motion needs to say something like, "That column needs to include the language, the specific language, staff recommend this change." Sarah, would you agree with that, that that's what planning is recommending?
Yes.
Okay. So if, if that item doesn't include that language in the staff analysis and recommendation, theoretically, you could have a motion that, that says, "That column needs to include the language, staff recommend this change."
I have a further clarifying question then. So on page nine of the staff recommend, the staff analysis, where it talks about, it's four, excuse me, 5.42B, 1B1. It's, it's the staff analysis and recommendation is, "Places of worship may have excess properties that is underutilized and could be developed to meet a variety of small-scale housing. Needs in conjunction with the place of worship operations, staff recommend evaluating the effectiveness and impacts of this change as part of the UDO rewrite." So in this case, that would be a no. We're not moving that forward. And then if, as a council member, that's a piece that I do want to move forward. So are we going to take everything, like, we're going to have to sit here and look at whatever is not recommended and decide, or are we just tabling all of that?
I, I guess what I would say, it depends on what council wants to do. You know, I think Councilmember Johnson made a recommendation. It sounds like you're, you've got a different suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was, I guess my hope and expectation was that we were going to actually dig into the nitty-gritty. And there are some things that staff is, which I totally understand, but I know I stood in front of Durham Can and said, "We're going to allow ADUs on, in houses of worship," and that's an honor I plan on, on keeping, as, you know. And I think that that's something that I have heard not a lot of controversy around, right? Which I completely understand from staff's perspective, why you would want to reevaluate it with the UDO. But I also think that that's a piece that there has been a lot of engagement around and a lot of the community is actually for it. And so I would not want to, on this evening, say no to that. Regardless of what public comment was tonight, this has been a two-year process. I have consistently heard from community that that is something that they want.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Freeman?
I, again, I think that we can take the staff recommendations, with the exception of the ones that staff did not recommend and the ones that we on council want to discuss more and move those out of the way. And that will cut down. But again, I'm going to say what nobody wants to say. It's going to be a long night because that's what we came here to do tonight.
Councilwoman Williams?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I would just share that in the conversation I shared, I just made the point that this is the frame that we're looking at this in because of an applicant. It doesn't mean that we can't take any of these items forward through staff. Like, that's not what happens. If we vote this down, there still could be items that move forward. It just gives staffs an actual chance to put it in the language and in ordinance that we can actually pass. So it's not a, it's not like it's all or nothing. I just think that this format is not working and it's making it hard for the community even, and us, to move forward. And so why not just get rid of it and then figure out which pieces you want to see and let staff know?
All right.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem followed by Councilwoman Williams. And I'm not going to hold to what I said in that I'm going to call for a vote. And you can vote it up or down and we can move on if you, unless someone offers a motion to amend that, and then you have that wording for that. You also have the right to put a substitute motion, but I do think that we need to move this along and get to a vote where we're actually going ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to associate myself with Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Williams' statement. I know what I want to do. I know what, what I, what I want, I want to go with, what the staff has recommended. This was similar to what we did with expanded housing choices. We said, we voted on it and we, we reserved a prerogative to look at it and measure its impact. I'm not, I'm under no illusion that my hand, with the Durham City Council, we are the final arbiter of business in the city. We can go back and, and undo what we've done. That is within our purview. But I, I'd want to, Madam Mayor, with the recommendation that I made earlier, and I think Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Williams have, have indicated as well, whatever councillor, the language, however the motion needs to be crafted in an exclusionary way to do what we want to do as a council and, and punt on those other things, whatever that language is, I recommend that, that we have that language presented to us and let that be the basis of a motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Freeman?
I appreciate Mayor Pro Tem's comment. I think what we heard from staff is they needed time to come up with that, and that's why we were trying to give them some time to come up with that. And so I, I just want to make sure you're aware that, that was why we just suggested to just vote it up or down and then move forward so that they can actually come up with language that would work. So, just not in, in the moment tonight. And the lawyers-
Councilwoman Hosey-
The lawyers are waiting.
Yeah, and I also think that there's some things, like I think some of us are saying there's things in it that we like, things that we don't like. I, I, well, you know, this is really relevant because I'm not going to be here, but for the rest of you, I, I think it's just a little too fast to kind of just, I, I'm still confused on what you're going to keep in, what you're not going to keep in, stuff like that. And I think actually the residents are too. So I think it needs to move from a yes or no and keep it moving, to be quite honest. Because I know, like you said, there were some things that I know we all agreed about in front of Can that we wanted in, right? So how do I know that that's really going to be, you know what I mean? That's why I'm confused. Like, I'm not confused, but what I'm saying is there are things in it, this, to me, this process right here, to me, is just not working well. It isn't. Because you can, you can say that, that things are going to be in it and you take out stuff like, how do we know it's going to be worded the way we want it to be worded? How do we know if we're going to be taking out things that we, y'all like, you don't like? It, to me, it should be an up or down, yes or no, and, and move on.
Final comment, Miss-
Yeah, that's why we're here tonight, to do just that, to make a decision, to do our job after we've done our homework and actually take action. I would be amenable to going with staff recommendations and honoring my colleagues' concerns that we agree that we want to discuss and then give staff time to address those in expedited fashion, meaning give you all a little more time, staff, bring those back with your recommendations. But I, I'm, I'm not, let me just explicitly say, I'm not in favor of not doing anything tonight. And I'll make an amendment or a second supplemental-
Before we, let's get it right procedurally from the attorney's standpoint of view. I've closed the public hearing. There has been a suggestion that I can reopen the public hearing in order for the staff to be able to get you that list of recommendations on what stays in and what stays out and then can bring it back tomorrow or at a date certain for you to vote on it. Or you can vote it up or down as it is tonight, since we've closed the public hearing, and offer your substitute motion to pass whatever it is you all have decided you're going to pass. So, what's your pleasure?
That's for motion.
All right.
Madam Mayor, if, if council's going to, because, I mean, the motion as presented before, it's, it's just a suggestion. We don't have to even entertain that motion if there's another motion. I'd like to hear what the, the work product is of the, of councillor as to the earlier request. The council's not bound by the staff, the motion right now that's being recommended.
So, as I indicated earlier, procedurally, this is what we have on our agenda that we were going to deal with. I will entertain a motion. If it's not, you can offer a substitute motion and move forward with that. That's it. That's, that's all I'm saying, is you're getting to the same point. But I'm just going to call for this motion and then someone may offer a substitute motion. Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So did you say that you would call for a motion unless someone else wanted to offer a motion, or do you want to call it and then have a substitute offer?
Let me turn to the attorney. Let's see what attorney O2 says we should do. Since we have this motion for our consideration, what's the easiest way for them to offer?
I think a council member can make the motion of their choice. And then if people want to make alterations in that, to that, that can be considered, but-
What happens to the one that's before us on the agenda?
Well, it hasn't been moved, so-
Right.
Right. So if someone wanted to take motion one and revise it slightly, that could be the motion on the floor or at the table, either place.
Okay. I, I'm ready for a motion, Madam Mayor.
I want to question, what happens to motion two and three? What two? It's only one or two?
Yeah, motion two is just the consistency statement.
Madam Mayor, does council have a response to my query about the wording?
Yeah, I think Councilwoman Johnson is about to give you all something that you all of you satisfied with tonight.
Okay, so I move that we approve the, the provisions in the SCAD proposal, which align with the staff's recommendations to be moved forward this evening with, and, and that would accept the following provisions from tonight's approval. Under topic number three, permitted uses, the changes to UDO paragraph six dash, six dot ten dot two A dot one. Under topic four, the changes to UDO paragraph four dot six dot six C dot one, and five dot four dot two B dot two dot A. Under topic six, all of topic six. Under topic seven, and I'm sorry, topic six is, I'm, I'm proposing that we remove topic six from this passage regardless of staff's recommendation. Under topic seven, UDO paragraph six dot A, sorry, six dot eight dot two A dot two A, six dot eight dot three, and six dot eight dot four. Slow down, I'm sorry. I'll give, I'll give, I'll wait there. There's more. Under topic eight, this would remove six dot ten dot one C dot one and six dot ten dot one D dot one, as well as six dot ten dot two B dot two. Under topic 10, this would remove six dot twelve dot two B, sorry, six dot twelve dot three B dot 11. Under topic 11, this would remove six dot twelve dot five E. And under topic 13, this would remove six dot ten dot one C dot one dot F, and six dot ten dot one D dot one dot F. Those are the items that the staff is not recommending that we implement tonight but are proposing to be evaluated as part of the UDO right, with the exception of the path proposal, which I'm also recommending that we pull from, from a vote this evening. So my motion is to pass the SCAD proposal with those exceptions as delineated by staff, as well as accepting the Affordable Path proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was a great motion off the top of your head. That was really good. All right. There's been a motion by Councilwoman Johnson, it's been seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor of that motion?
Madam Mayor, I have a discussion, please, on the motion. Staff, did you get that?
We are fortunate that this meeting is recorded, so we will go back and make sure that we get each and every one of those explicitly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
I'm making a friendly amendment to that.
And just for the record, just noting that there were a number of those items that did come up at the task force that need to be addressed specifically. And I'm not sure where that's going to happen or how it's going to happen, but I do think it's a disservice to our community to move forward tonight with that motion. Thank you.
Your friendly, I think there's a friendly amendment and then there's a further discussion.
And now I'm thinking, I'm confused. I don't know whether it will be a friendly amendment or not, but I just want to make sure we can still address those issues that we had a concern. I guess we can do that later and then bring back. But staff, I think you need direction on that, or should we just pass this motion and then ask, request us, like nothing else? It doesn't eliminate any other provisions from future consideration? If it passes, the ones that are, yeah? All right.
Yeah, I, I, I think it is a disservice to the community for what, because I, all of that is mumbly jumbly to the community. This is ridiculous. Read, regardless to that, I mean, just the way this is being done-
We have a word for this, Madam Mayor?
All right, there has been a motion by Councilwoman Johnson. I believe that motion was seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor of all the stuff she said, if you will sign by, we're not going to use our clickers because they have a, would you raise your left hand? All those in favor. We have Councilwoman Johnson, Councilman, Council, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilman Williams, Councilwoman Caballero, and Mayor Pro Tem. All those opposed have the same right. That would be me, Councilwoman Freeman, Councilwoman Hosey Hyman. That motion passes as we knew it would, four, three. The next motion for our consideration is to adopt the appropriate consistency statement as required per NCGS 160D.605.
So move?
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman, Councilman Johnson, no, Councilman Williams, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor, if you will raise your left hand for the consistency statement. Okay, that is Council, four, three again, same four, three, Councilman Williams, Councilwoman, Councilman, Councilwoman Johnson, just to say it on the record, Councilwoman Caballero, and Mayor Pro Tem. Your four, three has it again. I'm so glad I'm leaving y'all tonight. Mouth out of me. There's nothing else to come before us. It is 11:45 on 11/20. Irregardless of whoever's in control, the Bull City is always going to be strong. Thank you, my people.
Thank you, Madam.
I think so, y'all, but we're going to be y'all. Now, we can pick which one we're going to put on the block, but one is for the- Recall, recall. Recall.
Same thing, same thing.
Oh, we knew they were going to do that. We sat here five hours for this. Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. He's got two more years. Recall on. No, it's a recall in their statue. Their statue's saying, "It didn't get coming."
You don't know all the numbers, you'd have to go back and read-